And the fine staff there and so we've tried to stay close to this organization since we've opened in. It's been a pleasure to help and support Hutto ISD and so we're just privileged and very proud of our relationship. So, thank you very, very, very much.
Thank you, Rob. And last but not least, and this is a repeat one almost every year, is A+ Federal Credit Union. Jill Ratton Ollis on the is has joined us virtually. She's the branch manager for Hutto. And one of the things I'd say about A+, and I say it, I think, all the time. If you have a Hippo debit card, then you are a part of one of the many ways that A+ FCU supports Hippo Nation. Jill and her team helped launch that about, I don't know, four years ago, I think Jill maybe? Yeah, we'll go with four. Yeah, four years ago. And the give back from that, I think, I didn't, I wasn't able to look it up, but I think it's probably over $200,000 by now. How much that we've been able to receive back from, from A+, just from that Hippo debit card. It's been amazing. And in addition to that, A+ is a big supporter of the Hutto Education Foundation. Jill serves on the board of that and also provides grants to teachers and scholarships for our students. So, just a tremendous community partner. And once again, Jill, we'll give, I have this for you to add to probably the last three years that you've received. But we appreciate y'all and everything you do to support Hippo Nation.
Thank you so much. We really value the partnership. So, thanks.
Thanks, Jill.
All right, now we have the teaching excellence in the virtual world, Teachers of the Month. Dr. Thomas.
Dr. Sermani, can you bring up the presentation for me, please? That's the last one.
Do you want me to share it to the world?
Yes, please. So, this is. I need to give you my back. So, I'm going to try to read this. Madam President, Members of the Board, so tonight, we want to recognize teaching excellence in the virtual world. So, this is just another version of our Teachers of the Month. But what I asked our principals to do was to nominate, select someone on their campus who just went above and beyond the call of duty, especially in these unusual times. And so, each of them submitted their nominations. I have them here for you. I know you can read, but I'd like to go ahead and read them out loud since we're recording the meeting. Perhaps they might want to have the recording as a key. So, to all of our teachers who were selected, congratulations and thank you so much for your work on behalf of the kids of Hutto ISD. And you have a lovely plaque coming to you. It'll be in the pony tomorrow. And it's titled Teaching Excellence in the Virtual World Teacher of the Month. And it's presented and it has your name and your campus and, of course, the year. So, our first recipient is Abigail Rodriguez from Hutto High School. She teaches environmental systems and biology. And this is what Mr. Christian had to say. Abby came to us with knowledge and blended learning and immediately stood out as a leader who could train others on campus. She was innovative in learning how to create breakout rooms in Google Meet and using interactive activities to maintain a high level of engagement in her students. So, Abigail, thank you for coming to Hippo Nation and thank you so much for your work. Another lovely picture of her and her family. And I hope they're online listening. All right, and our next, our next teacher, you love the cats, so thank you so much about the personalities. Miranda Medioni from Hutto High School, English II teacher. Ms. Medioni is an English II virtual teacher and has been doing a great job of meeting students' needs while offering a rigorous level of instruction. She is the definition of accessible when it comes to her students and in finding unique and innovative ways to provide every student an equitable opportunity to access the content and the skills of the subject. She utilizes chat functions and class discussions and developed the verbatim protocol for monitoring assessments for the English department. And so, I also had the unique opportunity to see her introductory video at the beginning of the year. Dr. Holland sent it over to us. It was really quite inventive, Miranda. So, if you're listening to us, kudos to you for that video production as well. Have a fantastic school year. Congratulations. Okay, Deanie Wyatt from River Horse Academy. I love that cake, Deanie. Deanie Wyatt is our lead teacher at Hutto ISD's DAEP. Her leadership and selfless work ethic create a structured and caring environment for our DAEP students, which facilitates the optimal combination of academic, social, and emotional learning on a daily basis. While her classroom is very structured and organized, she consistently refines processes and procedures in her class, improving upon already high-quality best practices. She is a model teacher exhibiting the hippo way on a daily basis and is a great asset to Hippo Nation. And that was submitted by Mr. Drew McConaughey, our River Horse Academy principal. So, congratulations, Ms. Wyatt. All right, and from Farley Middle School, we have two teachers. Jill North, 7th grade math, and Mr. Fernando Milmo in dual language. Both Ms. North and Mr. Milmo incorporated blended learning opportunities into their assignments and actively engaged students in lessons and activities. In addition, each of them embraced the challenges of the Canvas world and were very helpful to other teachers on how to navigate the new learning management system. And these nominations were submitted by Mr. Mark Willoughby, principal at Farley Middle School. So, congratulations, Ms. North and Mr. Milmo. All right, and from Hutto Middle School, Brianna Stafford, 8th grade, social studies. Ms. Stafford has a truly servant head and heart. Whether it concerns her students or her coworkers, she is always the first to lend a hand. Ms. Stafford has taken on new leadership roles at Hutto Middle School this year, one of those being a mentor teacher to her counterpart. To say she has taken this job and ran with it would be, it would be a complete understatement. She never turns down a request for help from her mentee. Her mentee is greeted, is greeted with an open door every time she needs Ms. Stafford. We know that Ms. Stafford is growing professionally and someday will leave us to start her own principal experiences, hopefully here at Hutto ISD, Brianna. But we also know what a big loss for this campus that will be. Thank you, Ms. Stafford, for being true to your core beliefs and coming each day to work to serve students and the staff at the Hutto Middle School family. And this is submitted by Mr. Jason McCullough, principal at Hutto Middle School. For Brianna, she also serves on the ERI Committee, the Equity, Racism, and Inclusiveness Committee. And she serves on the Superintendent's Staff Advisory Council also. So, she is one busy lady just giving and giving to Hutto ISD. All right, next we have with Ms. Kristen Kimball, also from Hutto Middle School. She's a 6th grade science. I love that picture. Ms. Kimball's work ethic is second to none. She leads the campus in a number of professional development hours in our new learning management system and has become our campus go-to for support. On top of all of that, she spends a tremendous amount of time preparing engaging online lessons for our students. Virtual walkthroughs in her class have been great. She had 6th graders sharing their screens and giving organized presentations to their peers within the first couple of weeks of school. That is fantastic. It's taken us that long, too. She's often the first teacher here in the morning and the last teacher to leave. Mrs. Kimball is a rock star and we're proud to have her as part of our Hutto Middle School family, serving our students. Also submitted by Mr. McCullough. Way to go, Ms. Kimball. Congratulations. All right, and from Cottonwood Creek Elementary, we have Gloria Marquez, instructional coach. Dr. Marquez, I didn't know that. Congratulations, Gloria. Dr. Marquez has been a, has been at the forefront of our virtual learning journey and overall teacher support at Cottonwood Creek Elementary from the very beginning. She spends countless hours finding solutions and resources for our staff and then continues to study all innovative technology applications that support all of the teachers at CCE. Teachers across the campus have grown tremendously in the area of all things technology and a big part of their success can be attributed to Dr. Marquez. A week does not pass without her expertise being needed in some area of teaching, learning, pedagogy, and now technology. Cottonwood Creek Elementary is off to a great start with the support that Dr. Marquez unselfishly offers to all the teachers and staff at CCE. Submitted by Ms. Fatsigano, principal at Cottonwood Creek Elementary. Congratulations, Dr. Marquez. It's nice to know we have another doctor in the house. All right, up next, we have Mrs. Amber Brooks, Hutto Elementary kindergarten teacher. If you would have walked by Mrs. Brooks' classroom during synchronous whole group time or during small group time, you would have never guessed that her students were not sitting in front of her in person. She teaches her heart out with so much enthusiasm. I often expected to walk in and see a classroom full of students as I heard her leading lessons. The positive learning environment she creates is unmatched. I love watching her work with her small groups and appreciate that she wasted no time with beginning to build that strong literacy foundation for her learners. The virtual world would not, could not stop Mrs. Brooks from ensuring her kinder kiddos are getting exactly what they need, what they need, both socially, emotionally, and academically. It is a treat to watch her teach and I'm so proud of her hard work and the way she shows up no matter what. And that's submitted by Ms. Gay Ross, her principal at Hutto Elementary. Amber, we love your picture. We can see you smiling. So, thank you so much for your work with our kindergarten kiddos. Congratulations. Okay.
Oops, sorry.
All right, Mindy Rose, Melinda Rose, from Howard Norman Elementary. Mrs. Rose stands out this month not only for her work in September, but also the leadership skills that already started showing up when virtual learning started. She quickly learned how to adapt the learning platform in a way that made it very parent-friendly. This year, Mrs. Rose continues leading her team by continually sharing tips and tricks to ensure success for our virtual learners. Additionally, they're already working on one of our campus goals, which is to encourage writing across the curriculum. Students share their writing with Mrs. Rose each day and she has even printed out and created hallway decorations with their writing. No matter when you walk into Mrs. Rose, Mrs. Rose's classroom, you will find that her students are engaged and you may even catch her doing jumping jacks with her side words. It is for all these reasons that Howard Norman Elementary School has selected Ms. Mindy Rose for the September Teacher of the Month. Submitted by Mrs. Carrie Abrams, the principal at Howard Norman Elementary. So, congratulations, Mindy. And Othelia, it's Othi Rivas, Curly Elementary Instructional Coach. Love that smile in your picture, Othi. Othi has gone above and beyond to help our teachers during this time of virtual learning. She has compiled resources into one place for teachers to access. She has created videos and instructions to share with teachers on how to implement different tools into their Google Classroom and Seesaw platforms. Without being asked, Othi anticipates what might be challenging for teachers and creates a way to make those challenges easier. She also devotes a great deal of time to help plan with teachers so they can deliver rigorous lessons, even virtually. Submitted by Mrs. Kyle Rigorello, principal at Curly Elementary. So, congratulations, Othi. She's got that infectious smile. Terrence Stinson from Nadine Johnson Elementary, 4th grade teacher. The Stinson provides engaging virtual lessons, lessons that are conducive to the learning environment, offers individualized support to address all students' needs, no matter how much time it takes, and exudes enthusiasm for working with their students, supporting a positive virtual learning environment. She shows expertise and knowledge in multiple subject areas and has risen to the challenge of teaching all subject areas in order to support the specialization of her peers. She has also shown professionalism and teamwork by taking on a large virtual class size in order to support her fellow teammates and other students. She's done all of this with a positive attitude and loads of energy. Submitted by Mrs. Bridget Raichel, principal at Nadine Johnson Elementary. Love that smile, Terrence. Congratulations. And you've got, this is, this was my favorite picture of all of them. Look at that. Look at that setup. So, Jessica Wilding, Ray Elementary, 5th grade virtual teacher, and she's got her setup going. Since last year, Jessica provided her students with blended learning in the classroom, students would be able to watch her videos and learn independently while she managed her small group. This experience has allowed her to seamlessly transfer to the virtual teaching world and her vast expertise in technology has allowed her to support not only her teammates, but campus-wide. Her instructional videos have changed the lives of her coworkers. She will continue to be a campus virtual teacher and share her streamlined processes with us. Jessica is always willing to help and is an asset to our campus. Submitted by Mrs. Alexis Campbell, Ray Elementary principal. Way to go, Jessica. Congratulations. We probably need one, we probably need one of the lights, too. And Kalina Bellman from Veterans Hill Elementary School, dual-language kindergarten teacher. I tell you what, kindergarten teachers are saints to me. They are just the epitome of our whole teaching profession. They get us all started. Dual language on top of that. Kalina Bellman is a second-year teacher and member of the Veterans Hill Elementary family. During this time, Mrs. Bellman has shown herself to be a team player and one who puts others before herself. Ms. Bellman teaches kindergarten students and exudes patience as well as a calmness that makes her students feel welcome, safe, and comfortable. Ms. Bellman has had a separate meet-the-teacher night with her parents to make sure they knew how to log on and how to do it. She's been filling the role of two teachers as her partner teacher is out on maternity leave. Wow. Mrs. Bellman has helped the long-term stuff with all aspects of virtual learning, lesson planning, and how to get through a kindergarten day. Mrs. Bellman is an authentic example of being better together and demonstrating the hippo way. So, submitted by Mrs. Misty Patero, principal at Veterans Hill Elementary. Way to go, Ms. Bellman. Thank you. Awesome. And that was it. Teaching Excellence in the Virtual World. So, thank you for letting me read those to you. I wanted them to get the recording.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that.
Okay, off I go.
So, now, we'll entertain our public comment. The board welcomes the public and its comments. We ask you to refrain from comments about any district employees without proper due process. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes to express his or her comments. Opinions expressed by the speakers do not necessarily reflect those of the board, trustees, or administration. And tonight, I believe we have one that Mr. Robinson will read.
Correct. There is only one tonight. Good morning, or good evening. I would first like to share my appreciation for the approachability and communication for employees and team members all through Hutto ISD. Thank you for all you do. In light of that open communication, I'm curious as to the district's plans for overcrowded classrooms. I have spoken briefly via email and have been reassured that, quote, "We are extremely careful about not exceeding the 22:1 ratio in grades K through 4, especially in this time of COVID precautions, and that our board has been extremely supportive in approving additional requests for teachers or aides to assist with any class that exceeds predetermined limits on size," end quote. My son is in kindergarten at Howard Norman Elementary and his class has 23 students on the roster, not including any students who are not permanently in her class, but may be in attendance such as inclusion students. 25, 24, or even 23 students is beyond what is considered appropriate according to Texas Education Code in a normal operating year. I certainly hope you are heavily considering options to reduce the in-person class counts, especially with the consideration that as students return from virtual sessions or more students transfer to HISD, these counts can easily rise further. I also understand that you don't have to apply for an exception until the 30th day of school and have an additional 31 days to communicate that to families. But I would hope that during this precarious year, you would communicate as soon as it was even a consideration so that parents can be informed and speak up for their children. Please provide the support needed so that our students can thrive both educationally and in their safety. Thank you, Josh Shoemaker. And that's the only one.
Thank you. So, now we'll move to the board president report. And we have our monthly reading, which was provided by Morgan this month. So, if you want to start us off, Morgan, and then if anybody else has any input in, on her document.
I went ahead and printed one for everyone and put it at your spot. It's a pretty short one, but the title is "The School Board Behaviors That Matter Most For Student Success in Texas." And I kind of want to just focus in on, in the graph, the green part. There's three particular behaviors that have been shown based on research should be the most impactful. The first being ensuring resources are focused on supporting high achievement. So, every time we are met with a decision, are those decisions aligned to those things that we've identified as our priorities and are we funding those things that we've prioritized? And then aligning our systems with high expectations for achievement. I feel like if you were to look at our, our strategic plan, that we have some really aggressive goals in there. And I think the whole point of that is to kind of dream big and see what is, what direction do we want to take our, our district and our families and our students? And then the third one is setting goals for the board's improvement. And so, the reason why it's, again, I selected this article because it's very short, but really focusing on putting together an evaluation tool for ourselves to determine, like, are we truly sticking to those things that we've acknowledged are our priorities as a board? Do those priorities align with the strategic plan that we've all said that's really critical for the success of our district? And so, I brought this up because we've kind of talked about it before. And for a myriad of reasons, we've just never put one in place. And so, I thought that was really powerful, that that's one of the top three things that we can do to positively impact student outcomes. And that is all I have to say about that.
Oh, yeah, so kind of same thing with what Morgan had to say. The things I took away, or two things where sitting goes for the board's improvement and having an annual self-assessment tool. I kind of feel like we have talked about this over, over the time for a lot of reasons. But we always kind of pride ourselves on, if we're holding our teachers and our leadership to a certain level and standard, and they have evaluations and check-in points. I feel like for, we should be doing it also. I think everything else from the large effect, medium effect, and small effect, all those other items really encompass when we do the board improvement and set the board goals. So, I just think it's important for us to, to keep striving for that. Also gives us an opportunity to kind of have those conversations. I know that Mr. Padilla is always wanting time to kind of, for us to sit as a board and just kind of talk about those things that we normally can't talk about or we can talk about, but it has to be on the agenda. So, I just think it's a time for us to just kind of check in with each other.
I thought it was pretty interesting, too, that when you look at the other, the other items, like a low, or sorry, one of the, a small effect sizes, even if we continuously say every single day when we wake up, we want high expectations for all of our students, that is, that does not have as large of an impact as if we are holding ourselves accountable for those things that we've said. This is our commitment. I thought that was really interesting.
Tell me about, if you're referring to that first bullet point on 13 areas we're found to have a smaller but still significantly statistically significant value. I was gonna, my comment was on that. That surprises me that that first bullet point there is committing that to a clear and shared purpose. Because if you look at the green on the, the graph on the four, high achievement is essentially a part of those two first areas, right? So, we've talked about as a board, what we want to do to ensure high outcomes, achievement, et cetera. And it was a little confusing to me to see that committing to a clear and shared purpose is not a statistically, it is a statistically significant effect, but not.
It's not our biggest bang for our buck.
Right. So, it seemed to me that confused me a little bit, but no, I agree. I know as a, as a board, I think we've oftentimes said the same thing in different ways in terms of what our priorities are. I think we're all interested in really much, pretty much the same thing, student success and student outcomes. And we all have different optics and views on that. But, but you know, I, I agree that a board evaluation, I'll speak for myself. A board evaluation tool for me would be great to learn where I can lean in in certain areas that I know I don't lean in now and other areas where I lean in too much, I probably don't need. I'm a guy that, that opens my stuff and reads everything and doesn't necessarily, I'm not always as vocal or, or as involved in other areas that are still important, but need more attention in my opinion. So, I think a board evaluation tool would be critical and I think we should move on that fairly quickly as a board. It can only help make us all better.
The beauty of that, Edgar, is we all have different gifts and passions and which makes us, you know, our whole team much more valuable. So, and I love the discussion because if you guys remember the beginning of the summer, we started this whole thing in an attempt to, what can we do as a board if we're asking everybody else around us to, you know, be the premier district, to do what you can in your job to be that, that it starts with us? So, this, all, this whole discussion falls in line with that. And we actually have some, already have some examples of board evaluation tools. It's been curious because we've been in this sort of holding pattern, you know, in terms of elections and, you know, do we do it now when we have people rolling off? Do we wait for a self-evaluation? And so, just know that we are just, we, I have examples of it and we haven't let, let that fall off the, you know, wagon or whatever.
And I'm sure, and kind of my soapbox, people like me to talk about it, but we're in a situation and a season where the board's going to be changing over in the next couple of years. And it would be nice for us, the board, to set a foundation of tools and assessments for, you know, the future board members so that they'll have some type of roadmap to be able to come in and work with.
And you don't want to wait until there's like dysfunction. I think that that's the other thing, is that this could be a solid foundation that we all, like, if there are times where we are just butting heads, this is the thing that brings us all back to center and says, like, remember, this is what we said were our priorities and this is how we can measure whether or not we're successful with it. This is what we're doing. And so, I feel like it also is a great tool in that regard, too.
And it's also, we're doing this because we want to improve the board. We're not doing this because there's dysfunction in our board.
Right.
Get along real well together and get things done, but this is just going to help us go to the next level.
And even though it's, it, it probably would be significantly more work, I think there's value in us looking at two or three existing instruments and then taking the time, maybe in a workshop, to find our own instrument. Because we're, we're very unique. I think we, we're all very unique in terms of backgrounds and experience and skill set and vantage points. I say nothing of our district and how unique our district is, I think. So, I think a guide would be a good place to start. I'm sure Tasbe has an instrument or somewhere else does.
Orin has already sent us a couple because when we started talking about this earlier in the summer, actually, we actually did in late spring. I did reach out to Orin and he sent me some sample evaluation tools. So, we like, believe we're saying we haven't, we're just in a holding pattern until the election.
Yeah, then, I really do think it would be, at a minimum, an interesting exercise for us to get together for a few hours at some point and build our own instrument with the guy, under the guidance of the ones that already exist, I think.
And in each year, it's a, you know, it's a reassessment of the, and that tool. So, I always give an opportunity to kind of tweak it as we go along.
If you go to my Tasbe and you find this article, those blue links actually link to like, where you could, I believe you could assess yourself right now as the.
I struggle with it. Don't get me wrong, I, I do believe we need an assessment, right? But I struggle with, did this cause the school districts to perform well? Or are this, are these well-performing school districts that answer these questions? You know, so I think along with the assessment, I really think we need to look at other boards, too, and what they do. You know, I know Terrence is a junkie, right? You like.
Well, I was getting ready to suggest syllable shirts district because they have a pretty good assessment and I attended one of their classes.
Not just the assessment, I mean, just what they do. Because I mean, really, the assessment is us, how we feel like we're doing, right?
One of my hobbies is to go back and look and see what school board's got school board of the year. And I'll go back and look and see, know what, what they were, had challenges and what their success.
One of my crazy hobbies is watching school board meetings on YouTube. And if you, if you watch like.
That's just the crazy ones that you find on YouTube.
Well, what I mean, what I mean is if you watch like the Allens or the, the Alees, you know, the, if you watch the Katie's Big Big ISD school boards, they talk about very different things than we talk about, even though we're a 5A. Conversation, I mean, excuse me, 6A. The conversation is totally, totally different and it's because of size. It's because of what happens on a daily basis that does not get to the board differs, right? So, I think that that's an important thing to understand because a policy wonk, a data wonk like me who reads everything, cover to cover, right? a data wonk like me who reads everything, cover to cover, right? I, it's all rolling around in here, I, I feel like I'm informed, right? So sometimes I don't have a lot to say in certain scenarios, sometimes I do. But it, it, it's important for us to realize, I think, that as a six A district now, we are a six A district, but still small and still very tight-knit, kind of close, you know, community, it's very different than, than the information that's shared, the way it's shared, the resources that are available, the layers that exist in some of those massive six As that are out there.
Yeah, I, I spend time watching the port being ISD, and it's got 77,000 students.
I mean, it's.
Twenty-five or something.
One of those school board meetings, it's almost, it's almost like watching a, it's almost strictly financial, almost all of them, right? So it's very, very different.
I'm wondering to Philip would be is, like, which came first, the chicken or the egg? It makes me wonder, like, if you are open to assessment, perhaps that's more about a self-reflective type of body, and you probably already are inherently more directed towards like that growth mindset, where like continuous improvement. So it could be a coincidence, but it might also be that component as well.
I, I totally agree, we need the assessment. Don't get me wrong there, you know, I just, I, I struggle when I see data. You know, always like, okay, what's the lens this coming from, you know? And is, is it?
And the data was not a Tasby, I mean, it's a Tasby article, but it was not Tasby's.
Right.
So I would have to go back and actually get some more information about. But it, it is a good question, though.
I just don't know if, like, like I said, you know, I'm like, okay, is this, you know, which is it, you know? Is it, you know, good school districts answering these questions? Or is it they make good school districts because they, you know?
And really, really what we're talking about is best practices, because behaviors are going to vary widely from individual to individual. I will never be Connie, or Morgan, or Billy, or, we're all very, very different people, right? And we all work differently and process differently. It's not about behaviors as much as it's about best practices, in my opinion. What can we do as a board? What questions can we ask? How do we digest information and then, and then ask the right questions to drive the progress on some of the change that we're trying to get accomplished, right? It's, it's, it's not about accountability as much as it is about governance. So again, it's, at least, you know, I'll, I'll speak for myself. I'm not a, there are certain things that are ingrained in, in my personality or any, anyone of, anyone else's, and that may not, that behavior may not change, but the best practice can be honed. And I think that's where the value is, in my opinion, for an instrument like that.
Discussions are the beginning of that. So thank you guys for, you know, participating in these monthly readings and.
Thanks for the article. That was good.
Yeah, it was good.
So were you volunteering to do next month's, Philip?
Sure, I got my magazine today in the mail.
Great. Yeah, yours in the mail? That's good. I can get mine.
I can bring back something from Tasby.
Are we getting them here, Linda's, the book stars? Because usually we have a.
I bet.
Oh, I bet if you go into your My Tasby profile and put in your home address, it'll start being mailed there.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we are moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, you know, I'm gonna do a board.
Some things.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Terrence had a few things to add to the report.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, well, I just wanted to say that I had an opportunity to meet our new city manager. I was part of the interview panel for the citizens, and so I think he's gonna be great. I know he, that he came and visited the schools before he got the job, which I was impressed with. So I would like to suggest to Billy and Dr. Thomas that once he gets settled in, that we try to have a meet and greet, him, the board, and probably the city, and kind of start that relationship off.
Thank you for that suggestion. Yeah, okay.
Actually, it was Morgan. Morgan gave me the idea.
I completely forgot what you were talking about until just now. The meetings, like when we used to meet quarterly.
Yeah, I think it would be a good, a good reason to have a quarterly, to, to meet the new city manager. Also, I've attended the Central Texas School Board Association's monthly meeting. One of the things we talked about was legislative discussions. And so what are our priorities going to be for the 87th? One is going to be funding. Mike Marath was on the call, and Glenn, he said that funding will probably look like 2011 when they come around, which I understand it wasn't a good year for school finance. So we talked about COVID pandemic, and I had a chance to kind of see what other districts are going through, and we're all going through the anxiety of our parents and teachers. SPED is something that we're going to focus on. We talked about charter schools and, and those kind of coming in the area, and are we going to handle those at public ed? Accountability and testing, since we are doing the virtual, and what that's going to look like, and then just safety and security. And then next month, we're going to be talking about priorities finalized, talking points for governance update, and then getting ready for the 87th session.
Can I ask a follow-up question to his report? Is that okay? Did, so what, what was said about the accountability piece?
Just about how, what that puts us on, like.
Like, they actually named it and claimed it?
That's what we are saying.
Got it.
But we kind of advocate.
Like, interesting.
Okay, those are the priorities of the Central Texas.
Got it, thank you.
Anyone else have anything? I mean, you got to give a coin this month.
I did. I actually forgot, thank you for reminding me. I gave a board coin to Emily Campbell out of Maintenance and Operations, and I want to say, I told her it's, it was sorely overdue. In December, Emily headed up the angel tree that was done by the Maintenance and Operation. Everybody, contractors, everybody came in very eagerly, took our young people and, and helped provide Christmas gifts for them, and Emily headed that up likewise. And I told her, and I'll say it to his face, one reason was because she puts up with Henry every day. So I felt like that alone qualified her. And she assured me that he was a dear to work with, but I wasn't supposed to tell anyone, so. And also Emily was very key in making sure that all the PPEs stuff, when it did come in, that it got distributed, and just, she sort of has her hand in everything out there. And, you know, it's a mad busy construction site and transportation and everything. So yes, I gave one to Emily Campbell.
I just put you on the log.
I know, I didn't. Thank you. It looked empty, so I'm glad it isn't.
And you can add me. I gave one to Chief, but it was mostly for his, his department. And just, you know, loving our kids. I mean, and that's kind of what I, I always talk about and promote with our police department, is that they are truly loving our kids and, and help building them up. I also gave one to Cassandra in Todd's department for, I know Todd does a lot of work, but just putting the videos together and just kind of helping with getting that information out to the community. And then one to Adam Grumble, has done an amazing job of the videos that he puts together, especially for the football season and some of the other stuff that he's done for the district. So I really appreciate that.
I have three in the log I am coordinating to just, to give to them, and I don't want to announce it until I've actually gotten a chance to do that for them.
Okay.
And I'll announce it next month.
Okay. So don't forget that we have the log that we're trying to keep, so we're not all giving the same coins to the same people all the time. So be sure to log that in.
And I just want to do a quick shout out. I've been working somewhat in David's here, technology. And if you don't know that, excuse me, the Hutto Resource Center, I was part of writing a grant called Digital Equity, and we allocated a pretty substantial amount of money to help support the schools as we went into this school year. And we have to date paid about, as close to 60, the insurance for about 60 of our kiddos on their Chromebooks. And I have, they're still kind of dribbling in, one every two or three days. We set some, set up a certain amount of money that we're going to dedicate specifically to those that come in slower, and also working with Jen Porter and her group to help support the McKinney Vento kiddos as they come in and get their, their Chromebooks. We also purchased about 950 headphones and earbuds, and made those available to counselors on every campus so that they could hand those out to kiddos who didn't have them. So we're working to help support the great job that our technology department's doing.
I'm sorry, one more thing. Billy and I are doing a finance class for teens through the sandbox. And so we're going to be having our first session on Sunday, and I think we have what, three spots left?
Two.
Two. So hopefully, this is going to be something that we're going to hopefully continue to do throughout the year. This is our first session, our first time doing it. So especially for the high school teachers or admins, that, you know, something that you can help us promote, because we want our kids to be financially educated and sound, so. And it's through Dave Ramsey.
Anyone else? Good stuff. I love how the community, like, we just support one another. Thank you to the Hutto Resource Center for that. Okay, now superintendent's.
Okay. So first and foremost, technology. Again, David's here, a big thank you. I don't know if you noticed, we have new equipment in the boardroom. We have a new and improved camera. We've got new speakers out there, David and Henry. J.J. Moffaleto was actually boot on the ground. He was here yesterday, making sure that it was all going to work properly. Kelly Hong and Caitlin and Stephanie Ordin, they came and gave the ELT special one-on-one tutorial session on how to work all our gadgets. So we're getting up to speed ourselves.
Outlog season is sitting.
All right, enrollment. We have surpassed 8,400, we're at 8,482. The pre-COVID projection was 8,761, and then Templeton adjusted those projections to 8,663. I think we'll probably hit the pre-COVID one. Turnover rate is at 1.77%. And then, I promise, I don't, this is not COVID. Resignations and new hires, we had three professional resignations this month, six non-exempt resignations, one termination. We hired 37 new people this past month. The new employee orientation every Monday is full. And so hopefully, we'll start and get, you know, some of those vacancies that we still have. We held our, our table talk in September. We did a morning and afternoon session. Compared to the sessions that we had this summer, the attendance was light, but we had pretty good discussions. So I think families were just anxious about getting school back up and running. And I'd like to think that our communications that went out had everybody's questions answered, and there weren't a whole lot of burning questions around that September date. HB3 goals, just a reminder that before January 21st, we've got, our, this team of eight, we need to adopt House Bill 3 student goals, which are, are in line with our district improvement plan. But I would like to, to be able to set up a workshop in September 10, on that second Thursday, once we get our new board members online, and just have a workshop around House Bill 3, student academic goals. And we can use that as part of our, as a team builder. But I also think it will align with goals that you have for student outcomes. So if y'all are okay with that, I can put that on the calendar, and then Billy and I can meet with Orin or, or whoever we want to bring in to facilitate that session.
Dr. Thomas, I believe the House Bill 3 goals also will be embedded into the dip, so we can add to you once we get to presenting the district improvement. And if you want to make adjustments to it, certainly, you can let us know at any time.
Yeah. So number seven, Mr. Owens and I are going to be presenting at the TASA-Tasby Conference next week. It is all virtual. We have the eight o'clock slot on Friday, the October 2nd. But sadly, since Billy's the only one who registered, she's going to be the only one who can see us present. So I hope you will join us, Billy. But we're excited about doing that session. So Mr. Owens and I will have a practice session next week. We'll need to come in here, Mr. Owen, so that we can get familiar with, with this setup, and then we'll talk about how we're going to tag-team that presentation.
We can have a watch party at Billy's house.
Is that something that you might consider recording in-house, though? So that we have that to review? Like, sure. I guess I know, but.
Yeah. I can have Cassie set up her recording, and she can record us doing it. Yeah. Mr. Robinson, will you remember, will you remind you to do that?
Yes.
Please. Number eight, the HEV annual, HEF Annual Event, Saturday, October 10th. We're going to purchase tickets for all of you. If you would like to have a guest, please let me know. And you're welcome to come to my back porch and be part of that evening. So just let me know so that I can plan accordingly.
So far to go.
Huh?
So far.
It's so far, I know. And then number nine, and I don't know if you want, we, we want to take the time to do this here. We can do it another day. Does everybody know how to get to the shared folder in Google where I, I put documents? Yes? Okay. So I created an evaluation folder, and today in your take-home folders, you have a hard copy of my quarterly evaluation. And I've included some notes in there. But between now and the time we meet in October, I didn't want to run off a bunch of copies and documentation, because a lot of that is in our presentations, it's in our Friday report. But if you really, if there's something that you would really like to see, just send me a note, and then I'll put it in the Google folder. So again, so we don't have to make, and if you want a hard copy, we're happy to make that copy for you. But I think if we have one place to go and look for it, I could just put it in there. You also may have seen a calendar invitation that I sent out a couple of days ago. It's the Meet the Candidate Forum that's being sponsored by the Black Families of Hutto. So Mrs. Williams sent me the Zoom link, and then I attached it. So if you are interested in sitting in on the, on the school board candidate forum, it's sometime next, I forget the actual date. This is why I put it in the calendar.
The 30th.
30th, huh?
30th.
The 30th, yes. So it's next Wednesday? Yes, next Wednesday. So I'm going to kind of listen in. And then if you're interested in being part of the Rotary Bowling, I really need to know, like, by tomorrow, if you want to be a part of that. That's on Tuesday, if anybody wants to be. Nope? Okay. And I think that's all I've got. And I've made a note, Mr. Owens, we will get a meet and greet going with Mr. Hotmacher. Maybe we can do it, I don't know if they're letting, but we'll find out. Because I was thinking we could do it outside on the Park Pavilion, so that we can all spread out and other people can join us. But we'll, we'll get something fun going on that, on that meet and greet. Okay, I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
The instructional safety plan update?
Oh, yes. How do I make it go? Do you have to advance it?
Maybe the little arrow on the right side. See, on the. On the other.
Should be able to just.
You know? It's the main.
PDF. So you're not going to be able to.
Down.
There you go.
Okay, try again. Let's start over. Let's see if you can do it. There you go.
There you go. I gotta do this.
Okay. So we were trying to, yeah, the PowerPoint, you do the other way.
Yeah, this arrows for the PowerPoint.
So just a reminder, our decision-making markers for coming back in person, availability of our countermeasures. Mr. Gideon and his team have been doing a fabulous job with PPE and making sure that all of our facilities and all of our classrooms have what they need. I think they, they have a system going, so people are, are getting what they, what they need to maintain safety. The COVID cases in Williamson County, remember, the goal is trending towards single digits. Something that has changed are three and four, the percentage. Something that has changed are three and four, the percentage of hospital beds and ICU and general beds. So when we met with the public health officials last week, what they're monitoring now is that they want to make sure that we don't have more, that their goal is that we don't have more than 15% of the hospital beds tied to COVID cases. Now, when we pull up the record though, when we pull up that daily monitoring sheet from the Williamson County Public Health Authorities, it doesn't break those numbers down for us. They just give us a utilization number for hospital beds, but they're monitoring that internally. And if it ever exceeded, if those numbers exceed that 15%, that's a data piece that we would get when we have our weekly calls with them. And remember the positivity rates, the infection rates, and then the guidance provided by the local health authorities, we are sitting still at that yellow phase. Okay. Um. So it's just a couple of general updates. The Williamson County, County Commissioners are expected to provide support. So we're in the process of getting that letter and Scott Hausmeyer, our accounting treasurer, is working with us on getting that information forward to the council. So we met this week with Scott. One of the, the pieces, one of the data pieces that we need to provide to the county are the actual number of kids that we have. And so we were looking at, well, do we give them the numbers that we had at the end of the school year? Do we give them the numbers that we opened school with? Or what number are we going to use consistently? So we finally landed that we would wait until snapshot date and that that is the enrollment number that we would provide. So what they're looking at is providing at least $100 per student. We need to be able to show that all of the students that, that number represents all of the students that live in Williamson County. So we're probably going to have to pull out transfer kids, the children who, the children from people from families or primarily our employees who live outside the district and don't necessarily live in Williamson County. So even though we're educating them, they're not part of the Williamson County population. So those are the under, the only numbers that we're going to have to pull out. The, we also have started the district dashboard for COVID cases that went live last week. So you can go to the website and actually see the active COVID cases in the district. Now, so if families have any questions about how many cases the district is handling, they can go to that dashboard. Now, the only thing you need to know, as you all know, we had three student cases this week, our first cases. And so if you were to go to the dashboard right now, those cases were identified on Wednesday. Those are not going to be, actually Tuesday. Those numbers are not going to be reflected on the dashboard. Those numbers will go live on Wednesday. I mean, on Monday of this, on September 28th.
So it's a week behind. And also when you say Williamson County, when you say district-wide active cases, that means employees and students?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And to clarify, it's not necessarily a week behind, but it will be this time. It's always updated on Monday.
Okay.
So it happens on Friday, it'll show up on Monday, but this time because it was Tuesday.
And if, and the reason that we did that, we actually debated about when we would update that dashboard because we, we knew that our families would be expecting if they, if they were, if they've been watching the fact that we have a dashboard and we had those cases go live on Tuesday, we thought maybe that families would go on there and check to see if those numbers had changed. But there's just so much record keeping that goes on in the background. It was just too labor intensive to try and change those numbers on a daily basis. I think the data is cleaner if we wait for, for Monday.
But we're going to, they roll off after two weeks or after? Okay.
And those that were affected, the schools, they will know, they know. So.
I was going to say, well, we still send out letters.
Oh, yeah.
Parents.
Those entire school received a letter.
Okay.
Does the dashboard indicate the campus location staff? Look, I mean, is it just numbers?
It's just district-wide. As far as instructional plan updates, we're, we're still sitting at 6040. And even though the windows have been open for families to select, it's almost interesting how the number of families going out to virtual or coming in from virtual are staying pretty consistent. So there hasn't been a whole lot of change with that 60% of the kids in person and 40% of virtual. A piece of good news, ADA is at 98% because we're able to capture all of the kids who are learning asynchronously or synchronously, as long as the kids are making progress and submitting their work, we're able to capture that attendance. So that's a piece of good news right there. And then the other celebration that Dr. Sermani had is that we are really getting underway with blended learning. And it was great to see the teachers, several of the teachers who were recognized tonight. That was because of the, our blended learning initiatives.
Dr. Thomas, are we asking the parents why they're going back and forth or, okay, I was just curious.
Are we? No.
That's the campuses are joining.
Yeah.
I haven't been tracking.
Okay, I was just curious.
Human resources, this is your data. We've got 46 staff members and alternative work assignments. Zero cases are pending. As far as staff cases, we've got no active confirmed cases right now. We've got four people who are in isolation and five people who are quarantined. The number of resignations due to illness or COVID concerns is holding steady at 11. So that number has not changed in a couple of weeks now. Student COVID cases, this is a new slide that I added today. So obviously we have right now three active cases. One in Farley Middle School and two at Hutto High School. Interestingly enough, when I talked to Kendra today, we have three kids in the virtual setting who are positive. I said, did the parents call in and report that? She says, no. The Williamson County Public Health Authorities called her to let her know that there were three of our kids from the virtual setting who tested positive. Right now, we've got about 100 plus kids who are in, they're, they're in isolation either due to symptoms or they've been quarantined due to exposure.
So on the dashboard, would we only?
Good question. I was fixing that. I said two. That was why I said two.
We don't post the virtual ones.
Okay.
It has to be an on-campus.
Transmission.
Yes.
Or if it's a virtual person who went on campus, like say athletics or something, if they're a virtual student, but they came on campus for, for a reason, then they'll be posted, but not, if they're just a virtual student at home, they do not get posted.
And the dashboard is not indicating that that person contracted at school. It just so happens, this is a person that has been in school buildings that also has COVID, right?
Right. And as far as we know, those three cases were not, they were not contracted at school. As far as operations and updates, the water filler kits are coming in next week.
Just got to check something real quick.
So right now we have backup water bottles. What happened?
There's a slide that skipped too.
No.
The financial.
Oh, thank you very much. I know Glenn went through a lot of trouble for this. So I asked Glenn, because he was feeling left out of not providing.
Nothing else to do.
An update to the instructional safety plan, but I thought you would find this information useful. Prior year expenditures associated with COVID, 1.9 million dollars. Current year expenditures associated with COVID, 288,000. So total, we have spent 2.2 million dollars on COVID-related issues, expenses. So far, we have revenues received from COVID grants. We got $25,000 from Samsung and we've got $52,000 from, is this from the SHARs? Yeah, SHARs related funding. So we've only received, of the 2.2 million that we've spent, we have $77,000 in to help with that. And then grants that we've applied for that we're waiting to receive money on are the Esser grants. And what does TDM stand for again?
It's Department of Emergency Management.
Ah, there we go. So 700,000 dollars for that.
So that hundred dollars a student that we're going to get, is that going to go to cover that 2.2 million?
Yes. So if that goes through the commissioner's court, that'll be a little over $800,000.
So it's going to contribute towards that expense, but it's not going to completely offset it.
Right. What about gear funds? Are we eligible for gear funds?
That is something that we actually looked into today. And so we believe that we are, but we're working through that to make sure that, that's coming through the governor's office.
Right.
And we're still trying to figure out how exactly we apply for that. The only literature out there right now that I can find is how the governor applies for it, but it's not, it may be end up being an allocation.
Yeah, the governor, the TEA and the, in higher ed's case, the CO Board or the fiscal agents think, I know they're wrapping up the framework for the allocation.
Right.
But I don't know exactly how, what that process is, but I know there's significant money out there for it.
Right. And like I said, we looked into that and the only literature at this time was how the governor's office was applying for this fund.
Yes.
And yet it may be a situation where they're automatically allocated to us, but that we haven't found yet.
I have one more question. That'll be my last one, I promise. So the Provider Relief Fund, is that, was that something that they recognized that we did not bill what we typically would for the school year? And so that was, okay, thank you.
All right, operations. This is Mr. Gideon's world. Remember that we're having bottle, bottle filler kits coming in. And since, since obviously we started the school, school year without them, if you walked into any of the buildings, you saw big jugs of water from Sparkle Water, I think was delivering water to all the campuses. But it was, we're still going to be a couple of weeks out before all of the bottle filler kits are installed.
I was in Leander today and they're struggling to get the equipment in. It's all across the state. But we hope that it'll be in next week and we'll have all hands on deck to make sure we get them installed.
Yeah, I was at the football scrimmage and I was impressed, A, the coaches and staff were abiding by the rules and the little water systems that the kids use, hand-free and they were passing out waters and cups and stuff.
No, I think everybody's doing their, the second bullet is the one that, and Henry knows because I was constantly in his ear, but this is the area that really concerned me about making sure that we had enough sanitation supplies for all of our staff. And they have to, they seem to have a really good system going as far as inventory, delivery and, and control. We still haven't received the Sneeze Guards from Region 13. We, all of the, the, the local school districts went in on a purchasing cooperative. We ordered what, 1,400 Pepsi Glass, but they, they still haven't arrived. But some of the other items that we have ordered on our own have arrived. And so everything, everything that arrives in our warehouse goes out to the campuses. Henry, you want to speak to the HEPA filters? You purchased additional ones?
Yeah.
Are those by request?
CDC came out this week and kind of created a little stir about air quality and more fresh air was needed in the building. Assessing our standards, the fact that we've increased our fresh air loads by two hours each day in the morning and letting the system shut down by two hours. Of course, fresh air is all day as well. We believe based on our cohort groups, talking to other districts that we're going to be fine. But we've added some additional HEPA filters. As we go along, we find smaller rooms that I think it's, it's useful to put these. They're the little standalone tools that work, the same way the bipolar ionization works in our air conditioning. These smaller units are in places like your band hall, little rehearsal rooms, small pullout rooms. We've ordered some now or are placing an order to get some in for the, the athletic areas, like in the dressing rooms to just bring additional air filter filtration throughout.
What's our like turnover for air? I mean, what, is it like five hours that we?
I don't want to lie to that brand, but no better than I, but I think it's 25% fresh air at all times being mixed in with recycled air. So it's constantly moving. And as I think I reported to you in the last Friday report, the bipolar ionization units at the schools that have them absolutely will tackle COVID, you know, within 30 minutes. 99% of anything that's in the area is just taken care of with that. But again, the teachers are doing things like propping doors open, buses are running with their windows down. We're moving the air, you know, moving the air. So.
So this, custodial transportation staffing continues to be an area of concern for us. Kudos to our transportation folks and really David Ecker and Peter Gonzalez, because despite the shortages, they, they work, they work around it. They move people around, they change assignments. I know the, I watched those resignations come in. We had three custodial resignations on Friday, one on Monday. So that's already four people now, but they do a really nice job of staying up with their responsibilities. The ClearTouch AV systems, teachers are really happy. I had our staff advisory council meet yesterday and the teachers were singing the praises for having their ClearTouch systems. Hutto Middle School will be finished up by the sixth. And then of course, the last one, Chris Montez, Coach Plant and Michelle Thomason, just doing a bang-up job in trying to organize for UIL athletic events. And again, I'm part of a lot of chat groups and this is an area of high concern for everybody because everybody's afraid of someone coming in and taking that picture and posting it on social media and so-called, you know, telling on one another. We did get communication today that if the UIL receives, if somebody reports any school district of violating the social distancing rule or not abiding by using the masks, that they're going to, whatever pictures UIL gets, they're going to send directly to the superintendent and the superintendent is supposed to bring it back to the team and say, all right, folks, you know, what happened here? Why is it that this particular section was not socially distanced or what was happening? And so they're just leaving it up to the superintendents to make sure that they have the proper protocols and safety procedures in place. Now, one of the things I did tell Mr. Christian and I told Chris, we are not, we are not the mask police. You know, people are adults and when you buy a ticket, you're a, when you're purchasing that ticket, you're going to abide by the rules. Now, of course, anytime you're in motion, you know, your mask should be on, but once, once fans get to their seats and they're seated safely apart, they're outside, they may remove their, their masks. You're very familiar with this data table. I give it to you every Friday. This is the latest, the latest data. This is from Friday, the 18th and then Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. Notice the uptick in the case counts. Over the weekend, we had 35 on Friday, we had 54 cases and then coming in on Monday was 43 and then it drops down to 18. Now, we have a testing site here by the fire station going on. So I imagine the next couple of days, those numbers, there may be an uptick in those numbers.
Ended today, but it was three days of testing down there at the fire port.
And I didn't get, I didn't have an opportunity to check the numbers today. The infection rate and the positivity rate seem to be holding steady, no huge spikes. I got really excited with the positivity rate here on the 16th at 1.7. 2.2 is slowly starting to creep up a little bit. The hospitalization rates, both regular hospitalization rate and ICU have been staying pretty steady. Again, no, no huge upticks. Here's the EPI curve. And remember that the light color is, are the cases by the day tested. And then the dark color are the cases by the date of onset and they kind of keep those in a parallel fashion. But those numbers continue to stay really low and we hope they stay there. These are the cases as of date in Williamson County, 8,515, but 8,202 people have recovered. Right now in Hutto, we have eight active cases. And that's, again, it went up because on Friday we only had, there was only two. And we expect, we know that three of our kids are in that number eight.
Well, actually six of our kids, right? So six of the eight are.
Well, actually, six of our kids, right? So six of the eight are.
Oh, yeah. Could be. The COVID cases by age groups, and again, this was as of, as of yesterday. And so still seeing some low numbers there, but our, our teachers, like Connie was saying, are in this range. But elementary is still one point six two, middle school, one point three four, high school, a little bit higher, almost at four percent of the cases.
Do we?
Majority of the cases are in this group, eighteen to thirty age group, the invincible group.
Do we, I guess we don't get any information on the severity of the cases with the kids in school, okay?
No. And Kendra keeps a good, she'll keep a good eye on those kiddos that went home with the school nurses, and she'll let us know if anybody gets severe. So this is the, I don't think I had shared this with you. This is from the Williamson County Health Department, the phases for reopening. And I won't read all of those to you, but obviously, we're in the yellow, a moderate community spread. So we're really hoping to be able to get into that green area. But I think we're gonna be parked at the yellow, in the yellow phase for a while.
What would it mean for us if we moved into the green area, like?
It would allow, it would, procedurally, it would allow us to start allowing visitors in the campus, on the campuses.
Got it.
And we could open up a little bit more, allow parents in, not, not full force like we had before COVID. But yes, starting to allow some visitors in the building. And that's really the main thing right now, that we're, we're closed. No one, no one comes in. So the reminder of the decision-making markers is basically what I had in that first, in the first slide. No major changes, I guess. The one thing I did note here under number five, the positivity rates, the goal is getting to that five percent. It has been less than five percent for the last seven days, and so we were hoping to be able to stay there. So our recommendations, no changes to the instructional plan are needed at this time. I know it's not noted in there, but one of the factors that Dr. Sermani and his team and I are keeping an eye on are the class sizes, which is our highest area of concern. As you saw by the enrollment count, families are, are coming to Hutto. So it's, it's going to be incumbent upon us to watch those numbers. And while in the past, we may have allowed certain numbers to climb up, I don't know that, we can't do that in the time of COVID. We need to be a little bit more proactive. The problem is, I could come to you and ask you to approve that number of teaching positions, and the ones that you approved the last time are still vacant. So we're having trouble. We actually, we, we had another planning meeting, but we met with Lindsay. Lindsay was in that team, Lindsay, Dr. Almquist. And we said, go to the job fairs, start visiting the universities. We have people that are gonna graduate in December. They're doing a good job, go and observe them, offer them a contract right now, and they'll have a job even before Christmas, because a lot of them get done with their student teaching before Christmas. We'll get them in here and get them, get them a classroom, get them to start going. So that's where we are.
Dr. Thomas, I meant to add information about our free flu shot clinics that are ongoing right now.
Oh, yeah.
I meant to put that in there, and I forgot.
Okay. For families?
It's underway.
All of the staff. No, not for families, since, and once again, if we were in the green phase, then we would be in a position where we could allow the community to come in. For Walgreens is providing free flu shots for all of our staff. And we have a schedule there on, on a campus every, every day.
And Kendra is coordinating to also make similar shot clinics available for students. And I'll get, I'll make sure that's put out through either an email from Dr. Thomas or Matt in that report.
Thank you all.
Okay. Thanks for putting that together. Dr. Sermani is up next with school support.
That's just the information report. I don't know if you'd like me to, I think we've been not going through it, and you just said, if there's any questions, I can refer to it.
So it's, yeah, it's one of the standard, that's the report.
I just had one question. I know that prior, prior, during the planning for the fall, I remember y'all talking about this, and I know that I read something from, I don't remember if it was the Department of Education or some publication online. Now that the, now that the school year has started, do we have a way of accurately or confidently predicting the impact of the students coming back to class, whether it's virtual or whether it's, you know, in person? How they were accustomed to finishing out last year, and how the parents are adjusting, and the impact of the learning at home for the kids? Do individual parents have a way of drawing from resources, drawing into a community of support, drawing into anything that gives them a way to, when the teachers aren't looking, when they're not in the class, when they're not talking to a counselor or a staff member, doing something to give them support, to make sure that their kids are successful in this whole new learning environment? I think that, I, I've been reading a couple of things about that a little bit, and I know in higher ed, and struggle with that a little bit as well, even though it's quite a bit different, obviously. But what are you, are you, are we hearing from parents anecdotally? Do we have formal feedback from parents to you, to the superintendent? What are they struggling with? What support is out there for them? How does that differ per diff, different age of the child, grade of the child, et cetera? Is that something that, I know we're aware of, but is that something that we're measuring and monitoring in any way?
I could say we're measuring and monitor, I think it's as it comes in, we adjust. A lot of that comes through the parent support specialists.
Yeah.
And Elder Torres, who lets the instructional team know, here are the things that we're, we're experiencing. And in some cases, I touched base with David, because there's technical issues, which in some cases, we've, we've learned aren't technical issues. So there's a kind of a feedback loop, but I don't think we've captured it anywhere on a spreadsheet or anything like that.
Yeah.
On the academic side, I feel more confident about the in-person, and teachers knowing what they've got, working with the kids in person now that, we, we did do a whole round. So, so I think I said before, the state's calendar of testing hasn't changed.
Right.
So whether we're in person or not, we have to do all of these assessments that we're required to do. Anecdotally, and I don't wanna say it's everywhere, but certainly there are places where we're looking at the data for a campus when we did it all virtual going, wow, the kids really improved a lot since last March. And I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that's real, and neither are the teachers. Now, I, I'm not, I don't think anyone's out there trying to cheat, but I think a parent doesn't know how and when to help a child when they're taking assessments. And so you got the results you got, and you have to kinda take that with a grain of salt when you're looking at that assessment data. So overall, academically, I feel a little blind. I do.
And that's really, I, I think it's important to acknowledge, it's not, that's not really anything that we can do above and beyond what we're doing. I think we're doing tremendous work. I just wonder how, I wonder how much parents are just dealing with it on their own? Instead of coming to us and saying, I really, I'm really struggling, I really need help. And maybe it's just, you know, they're, they, they just don't have a choice, you know? And I, I just worry about the impact on learning for the kids, because if they're not asking for help, then, then maybe the student is ultimately just kinda fending for themselves and struggling. And, and I mean, you, you can, I know I've, I've heard from teacher friends of mine that, that tell me things like, you know, I, I can see when I'm on a Zoom, I can tell what's happening at home, or, and I don't hear from that parent, but I know something's going on there, right? So, and again, it's not, it's not related to anything we're doing or not doing. I think it's just, to me, always on my mind of, what are they not telling us? You know?
I think it'd be really kind of interesting if we were to, if they're doing something like, I know, like, the ELT got special training for some of this new equipment. If there would be like a, a virtual resource for, for parents, like those virtual families who they're home coaching their kids through things, like, once every two weeks, there's thirty minutes where we all get together and we talk about one feature in Canvas so that they can help their students access that better. And I know that not every virtual family has, has the adults at home. I recognize that that's not the case. But for those that are there, perhaps that would be something that might be useful. And then you could record those sessions to have them on demand for those families who are working.
That's, yeah, there are actually, Mrs. Torres already had that idea, and they're actually, she actually got it from your tabletops, and the amount of families that were coming to the superintendent and board meeting. If families are willing to come to that, we should be having these, just to, if y'all saw Cooking with Joe, we're about to have, Using Google with Joe and Alex and some people like that.
Cool.
So they will be kind of a bank of, we have a few of those already, but there's gonna be a bank of them with parents interacting, and giving that kind of feedback, and then plus live interaction as well.
Yep.
So like the frequently problems they have, there's almost a video that supports that?
Yes.
Like that?
And we, we learned from the March, there were a few problems that were, were definitely, we, we, we learned from. And so we, we went into the year with some of those videos already ready. But then, as we move on, of course, you know, parents move on to another level, and so they hit another barrier, and so a new crop of things to work on. So.
Yep. Now, this is a question to ask. With our seniors, how's class ranking working with virtual and?
And actually, by TEA role, it's actually exactly the same as, I, I think, and Mr. Christian and I had this conversation a while back. Our biggest focus on that area is to ensure that the virtual and the in-person is balanced, because what we didn't want is for, especially for those top twenty-five kids, to one family or another, to feel like there's an unfair advantage.
Yes, that's true.
And so there was a lot of care, and what, what generally ended up happening is when you had those, those top students, they, they all have AP stats, and so they have the same teacher, whether you're in person or virtual. And so it's really about working with a teacher to ensure that equal rigor is being given on either side. I, I don't know that it's perfect, but we're certainly working and acknowledge that. And we did a lot of work to try to make sure that, that the kids felt like it was balanced. And the only data point I know is, I, I was really worried that we were gonna see a mass group suddenly start moving this way, because they heard it was easy, and another group moving this way is that, well, we didn't see that. And so I'm hoping we, we struck the right balance with those.
All right, so campus improvement plans.
And again, I, I certainly can, I don't know that there's a lot to present. I did wanna give you all a little bit about the accountability system, because this TEA accountability machine has fired up and has notified everybody, it's go time. And so everything is based on 2019 star scores, and they just rolled everything over. They created a couple of new requirements. That there will need to be a presentation at the October board meeting for two campuses. And that would be Ray and Nadine Johnson. So at the October board meeting, you have to solicit public comment as well. And I'll work, Dr. Thomas, on what that requirement is, to work with Mr. Judas on, on how we'll do that. So that's brand new. It, it just appeared, actually, a month ago. But I did highlight some of the accountability pieces, in case you were wanting, since you are gonna be looking at CIPs. But unless there's questions, I could spend hours on that one.
So you guys know, we've kind of, in the past, have divided these out and divided the campuses out so that we could look through the theirs. And so in the interest of time, I just assigned everybody a campus, two campuses to look at. Obviously, if you feel strongly that you do not want the campus that I assigned, feel free to, you know, talk to whoever you got it, but if, if you guys are good with that. And then also, I had asked Dr. Thomas and Dr. Sermani put this together, just on the front page of your, just like, what, what are we looking for in the, when we're looking at these campus improvement plans? Like, what are the things that we wanna make sure we're identifying when we're looking through them? And what are, what should we be seeing in them and that kind of thing? So just that front page is, is kind of for our, you know, tool to use as we're going through them and looking at.
In our folder, is it all of them or just our two?
Just your two.
Okay.
Just got your two, Billy.
Yes, I, I, and I, I have three, but there, you know, three that others have also. So if you guys need help and you want me to take, you know, help out with one of yours, I'm happy to.
I'm just gonna pass you both a hint.
He loves this.
I get about four pages in, I'm like, what?
I think it's, it's important for us to, like, do that, because imagine if, if it's that difficult to read and digest because it's very lengthy, imagine how hard it is to put those things together.
The difference in yours and mine. I just wanna look at the difference.
Well, maybe you're a smarter board member, and that's why you get a bigger packet.
I was on the committee. I don't know what your is.
I do have a question, Billy. Since neither one of mine are reported out in October, and that would've been my last board meeting. I don't know if I need to change.
Well, the only reason those two are being reported out, Connie, is because they're part, they fall under, they, they didn't meet the, they didn't meet certain standards. They're on a watch list.
As an overall D domain on the state accountability system, now is required to present their plan for not being a D domain campus. They're not an overall D, if they have a D in one domain as an overall score. And Ray had one in school progress, and Nadine had in school progress. Have to have, solicit public comment. So we're planning on doing that in October.
Okay.
Okay.
But still, point taken. If you're taking notes on.
I have Veterans Hill in the high school.
Okay. You can just share your notes, you know, with us and.
And just, just a note. So remember, la, last year, we had each of the principals do a mini presentation. They each had seven to eight minutes to talk about some of their main initiatives off of their campus improvement plans. So this year, with Missy Wright being over the principal, she suggested that we do it differently, that we do campus showcase meetings, where there'll be a two-hour block of time where we have an opportunity to go and sit on the campus and hear directly from the campus leadership on their initiatives and what they're working on, straight off of the campus improvement plans. So the, the campuses that were assigned to you, you're gonna get an invitation to, to their campus showcase meeting also.
If you can make it, that would be great. And if you can't, it's, we completely.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if we would have an opportunity to actually physically go to the campus.
Yes.
Are they all going to be within like one time, like one block of, or?
It's not December fourth to go through the end of January.
Oh, okay, okay.
There I am again.
We can invite you, Connie.
No, I meant, I won't get to meet with mine.
You can still go.
Yeah.
You can still be invited to their showcase.
Oh, I'm not feeling hurt that I'm invited. I'm just saying, I won't have a chance.
I'll actually take office till January, right?
You're just trying to.
I'm thinking October.
Okay. Anything else, Dr. Sermani, on the campus improvement plans?
Unless anyone has any questions, I will let you know that these are all meant to be drafts. And so if you see a mistake or two, please let them know so we don't miss it, because, but also that they're gonna be making changes as, as we go all the way up until probably the next board meeting.
That, that is the funniest thing you've said. You asking me to proofread something.
Oh, but you've got, so we asked Dr., actually, Lizzy Judas had a great suggestion. She says, can we get a guide as to how, how we read these? And so Dr. Sermani and his team put on, look for, just a few questions, just some guiding questions of, I read this document, why should I be asking myself, what do I look for in a campus improvement plan? And if you see something that's really an outlier, why is this campus, you know, wanting to raise money to go to Disneyland? Yeah, just, you know, something odd like that. Not that anybody would have that. But if you do see something that's an outlier, as far as a strategy or an action item, yes, definitely ask that question. Why would, why is this campus focusing on, on this particular initiative? yes, definitely ask that question. Why would, why is this campus focusing on this particular initiative? We haven't even talked about that at a school board meeting. That would definitely be something to.
All right. Okay. And up next. Ms. Ross Stryker with the technology plan.
Thanks for being here tonight, Ms. Ross Stryker.
Excited to be here and to share with you guys some of what we've done this year. I think I've used the word crazy more times in the last six months than I've ever used in my life. Because people ask how it's going. It's just a crazy year because it is. But it's also been a good year. It's been very eventful. What I want to share with you kind of what we've been doing, a lot of it's been affected by COVID and some of it we're planning on anyway. And especially how we have, have been stewards of the funds that we have gotten through bond funds, especially as well as local funds. Most of our large projects are bond funded. And we always take those funds seriously because publicists put trust in us. So we always do bids on all of our large projects so we could, we could get the best prices and competitiveness from our vendors. And that's really paid off and has actually helped us save, save on our projects and come in often under what we had allocated, which, which means then we can do more later, which I always like that. So, yeah, I think, is this, yeah. So I'm not going to hit every point out here. You could read it on your screens, screens. I put a lot of stuff. But I just want to hit some of the highlights. So March, when everything went crazy, is that where you're there? We had issued, issued 30, about 3,500 Chromebooks to students at that time for the temporary virtual learning that took place. And at that time, one of the other things we implemented, which we still have going at this now, is our online technical support path for the, for the parents. Because we needed a way so we could provide support for parents and at that time for staff at any place, from any place. That's kind of our goal. So the online chat, chat's what we came up with and it's pretty popular and it's going still. And that has been, been our primary way of parents contacting us where they have technical problems or even students. We've had students get on there sometimes, which has been kind of funny. Here's other questions that they ask our texts. Then we kept it going. We've done other things. And then in the summertime, we started our refresh plan. In the summertime, we issued all of the staff new laptops in a very COVID-safe way, three at a time. And then we also worked on getting Para's Chromebooks, that's Chromebooks, because we had heard, heard from them often that they didn't have anything and they needed that to help work with their teachers. So that was kind of our plan to help them out. And then we also worked on refreshing labs and a number of other computers and getting our Chromebooks processed that we ordered for, to start with our one-to-one program. And then, of course, July, August came along and we had found out, oh, we're starting virtual. So we started giving out Chromebooks again because we had got most of ours back. And we gave out over 6,600 Chromebooks in the months of July and August. So that was kind of a surprise, because we weren't sure what to expect after the spring, but it's obviously almost, you know, over 3,000 more. Then summertime, we also, we also gave out, out in July and August, about 300 hotspots, internet hotspots to help our families ensure that they have the access to the online learning that they need. Then one thing you've heard a lot about lately is our AV project with these, with these lovely screens and softwares that go with it. They're really awesome. They have a lot of practical uses for the teachers. And we've been working, working on that and we're almost, we're almost done, done with the installs of those. As you heard earlier, HMS is our last install. Hopefully they'll be starting really soon. And have them done, done here. I know they asked me a lot when it's going to be. They're excited about it. With, with our bond projects, True North Consulting is our partner working on bond, on a lot of our bond projects. They help us with some of those areas where we, we don't work on very often, maybe like, like a, like, like data center. I mean, how often do you go to data center? You know, so they have like an expertise. And they also have the, have the people to help us supplement our staff, like with the AV project, help us keep up with the punch list of items because there's a lot to it and we do it district-wide. The nice thing with this project is with our bidding and, but planning well, well, we actually came in on it well, well, under what we had allocated in the bond funds. So that's always nice. So kind of what we have in progress right now, a couple of things I wanted to highlight on here is our RNA wide area, area network is in progress. Still, still, we are, we are waiting on the E-rate approval. Something that we always try to leverage when we can is E-rate funds, federal funds that will subsidize our networking connectivity and equipment. So once we get, get that for our, our way, we'll be able to, to start with the actual digging of that and we'll actually save, save lots of bond funds because of those subsidized E-rate funds. The other thing that will be starting soon is our RNA data center, which we're excited about to have, have a nice, real, real home for all of our servers and equipment that are coming in here. So that'd be nice. And True North, it has finalized the architectural plans with Architect's Text. And we're all, we're all ready for that to start over there. What's the progress? And then the last thing I want to talk about in progress is the start of school. So when all the kids came back in person recently, we, we knew that some kids, kids who, kids haven't gotten Chromebooks yet at the secondary students. And this is our one-to-one program, got accelerated a little bit, started this year. So we've been handing, handing out Chromebooks at the high school and the middle schools. So every student there now, like I would, should, should have a Chromebook in their hands right now. We also swapped, swapped out the Farley kids, kids, because the new ones we had ordered for them weren't here when we handed them out back in July. So we actually swapped them out on Tuesday this week. And so best that I could kind of estimate is we got about now assigned to students over 7,200 Chromebooks as of today. So because we've, we took the 6,600 and we've added the, the rest of the secondary kids to get back in person with the one-to-one. And then with the elementary classes, we are, we are giving them Chromebooks and assigning them to the students. So if we have to do a virtual again, again, it's all signed. We could track them and it's all great. Most of them had one already, so it's just filling in those extras if you didn't. And then last few little things I want to talk about is kind of where we're going in the future. One thing, thing, thing that's in the bond and that we're working on is a DR site, a disaster site in the, in our district. And we are looking at Farley and Curly as possible sites for that. And True North, North is doing studies of those sites to help us kind of weigh those two. Farley is kind of our leader now, I think, just because of where it's located. Gives us more space in between 6,000, 6,000 up there and the Sasa of the district. But we'll see what the study comes out. And then other things related with our, with our, with our data center, our new servers and storage, we're getting there. Camera upgrades for the safety and security, working with that Chris's team and Kendra's team on that. And looking at our phone systems. And then, of course, next year, year, summertime will be our second year of our, of our refresh plan as we start going into that and keep, keep up that. And finally.
So I'm sorry, Ms. Ross, quick question. On that computer refresh plan, is that part of bond or 199 funds, do you know?
So this year, year, we did it out of bond to kind of, to, to help kickstart our, our refresh. This year's refresh of our five year, we have a five-year refresh plan. This year is our largest year dollar-wise because of a lot of catch-up, honestly. A lot of refresh things that have been not done in the past. So we, we had wanted to get the, get the biggest bang as soon as we can. So that's where the teacher laptops came in as an example and some of the other refreshes. And so next year, year, year two, two, we are, we are looking at probably, probably using some of our bond, our bond savings from these projects where we save money for the second year. But in the long run, we would work with Mr. Graham and, and look at, do we, do we put a certain amount in the budget of year so we're not dependent on bond funds ever because.
They're going to run out.
Exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah. So, and so last one, kind of looking, looking further, some of the things, things we want to work on is a reporting type of capability so that, that we could take all our data we have in different sources, smash it all together and give teachers and principals and of you guys dashboards and reports and things that will, will help everybody make database choices and decisions better. Which, which as we grow, you know, we're in the, definitely in the medium size now as we keep growing. That data becomes more overwhelming. So be able to massage it and use it better. Security and cyber security is in the bond as is Bell and PA system, the clocks, clock systems, do refreshes of those systems over the next few years. And it, and the core course, ongoing things, things like our, like our network upgrades that's applicable in the future. Leveraging all those E-rate funds from the government or refresh plan with, with the computers and devices and those kinds of things ongoing. So it's kind of a quick, I didn't go over it all, but kind of quick of what we've been doing and where we're going. It's been a busy year so far. I will say, say as a, as a team, I want to thank everybody on our team. I don't know if they're watching or not, but, but because they've all worked really hard. And I'm impressed that everybody's attitude has been very positive and optimistic this year. And the support of the, of the district is appreciated. Not all districts have that. I've heard from other districts and where some of the IT people feeling not quite loved, you know, appreciated. And we, we definitely feel that here and the support and that the teachers and administrators have been, have been patient with us when we had to focus on parents and students for Chromebooks seven and they had to wait. So it's really appreciate everybody's support and I'm grateful for it. Thank you guys. It's a few questions I'd be happy to answer if there's any other questions.
What's our price point on our Chromebooks we get for kids?
That's a great question. So the price point on the, on the Chromebooks with the, with the management license for them right now is just under 300. It's like $293. And we are buying, so starting, starting this year, we have device standards. We're buying the same models and devices and everything now. So teachers gave us feedback. And the, the student Chromebook is what we're buying now. Everybody seems to really like them because they are touchscreen and they fold over, which is, and, and it has a stylus, which I was kind of interested. Those kids have those ones very long and they're actually using them a lot on the stylus with math, especially. We're talking a lot about graphing and math. So, so they're, they're really using them right now.
I mean, don't get me wrong. I get friends are like, oh, the kids going to listen. I was like, you know, what we, what we pay for them. I mean, heck, they lose two textbooks. You're pretty, you know, the same price as a.
And I, I will say, say, you know, we, with, with the, with the one-to-one especially, you know, I kind of look at Chromebooks two ways. We have the temporary ones that the younger kids have because of virtual learning. And then we have our long-term ones, which are the one-to-one program for the secondary schools. And for the secondary schools, we offer them two options. As you, as you probably know, they have an optional in on it, in on it, insurance that they could get, a device insurance, or they could not get that. And the insurance is recommended by us because it really is just gives parents that peace of mind that if something happens, then they're not going to get a big bill. But we are definitely mindful of that. It's, I mean, people move. It's not a perfect.
Right.
But the benefits, I think, are really there for the kids. And that's why, you know, why we're doing it is to give all the kids equitable access. And I think that teachers, I mean, if anything positive is coming out of COVID, I think teachers, as you guys mentioned earlier, are a lot more open now, now suddenly to using technology in their classroom on a regular basis and a little deeper. And, and we're seeing that, I think that last year, when we, when we talked about a one-to-one program, you know, there was a lot of people, yeah, that's awesome. You know, I believe that in my classroom. And there were some teachers who were maybe a little hesitant because of change. And I think now a lot of the teachers are really seeing the benefit of it, that's been forced on them by COVID to help open their eyes in that way, definitely.
Have you seen, I mean, has there been a lot of problems with, you know, kids and their technology? Like broken Chromebooks? Have you seen any so far?
Have we seen any? Yes, yes. We've seen some since, kids, I mean, kids have been back, what, two weeks almost now? We've had some, some broken, not a lot. It's pretty typical. I mean, we, we assume that we're not breakage. I mean, it's going to happen to their kids. I mean, it's also breakage. So it's going to happen. But I'd say it's not like crazy yet. I mean, I mean, I, yes, it's pretty low so far. Our goal would be, most districts are doing pretty good. If you stay in a, in a school year, if your breakage is probably around between 8% to 10%, it's pretty, it's pretty typical. It's mostly broken cracked screens because that's the most kind of flex, you know, flexible thing on there. Gets dropped or whatever.
So do we plan on keeping the call center open?
For the, for the parents, you mean? Is that what you're referring to?
What? What?
Is it the chat center or the chat center?
Or the chat.
Oh, the chat, yes. We are, we are keeping it open. Now it's tied down, down. So it's only manned by RNA. It helped us because a person who also thinks our staff helped us cause it to be manned that now. We did that. Beginning of school year, we had like, what do we have? Five, six, seven people there? Because we were taking like 250 a day. Now it's just a handful a day. But our, our, our plan is to keep it going, ongoing because it has been popular and it's, it's been helpful. So yeah, definitely. You know, I think it just gives us a little, little nice service for the parents, which they really need. And it's been, it's been good.
You've done a great job and good job.
Thank you. We, we are trying definitely and.
I think you guys are succeeding.
Thank you. We appreciate that and everybody's support.
In this crazy time.
Exactly, you know. IT folks are a little crazy, so I guess we're.
Tell my wife you said that.
I just wanted to make a comment. I forgot this until David said it, actually. We also, HRC also put $5,000 toward hotspot costs. So we're paying the, the cost of at least two months for that. So just wanted you to know that money was all allocated for technology in the school district.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Gideon, did you have anything?
Updates and Brandon and I can answer any questions that you may have. I had one question earlier today that wanted to be discussed. I just wanted to ask you to address any concerns.
It was me. Yeah, I just noticed when we did the meeting the other night for the committee, that the elementary set on schedule and, and I thought, we, when we talked originally, they were supposed to be done by the start of the school year. So did the schedule get bumped or is it?
So when Barrett Williams presented back in April, end of April, they had a substantial completion date as for 8/14 and a final completion for 8/28. So even on substantial completion, we got on 9/14 and, I'm sorry, 9/11 because the 14th was the first day of school. And substantial completion means that all the safety features are in, that they have the clear pathways and different things like that. And so we got the substantial completion. And again, it was four weeks later than we anticipated. Please note, the district shares your frustrations, well, the end users frustrations with not having the ability to utilize those areas. the ability to utilize those areas. So let's talk about the good and the bad of that project. The, the bad right now is the long lead times for the glass partitions, the lighting that's needed, the courtyards that are out there, different things like that. And, and I'm not going to stand up here and tell you that it's all COVID related because it's not. And I don't like that excuse, but we, we share your frustration. But, but the good things are, starting Monday, they're going to be far enough along that we can start moving that furniture around, take the plastic off so that the, the staff and the teachers and the principals and students can start utilizing that area. The restrooms will all be working. Again, the, the courtyards, we talked about back in April and May that they wouldn't be completed till October.
Right.
So that's the frustration. And, and we've been in communication with the principals and the principals have been real resilient with it all and supportive and, and we've really enjoyed that piece. And that's where we're at with the project.
I mean, we talked about it at that, the meeting too. I mean, is, is Bear Waves having trouble getting help or?
I don't want to speak for Barrett Williams, but just know that we are vocal in the O A Cs that, you know, I've asked a couple of times, what would you do if COVID hadn't hit and we didn't open up a, a whole month earlier? I think Barrett Williams would have provided us with the safe building for the kids to occupy in August had we occupied it, absolutely. But I don't think we would be able to use, have used those, be able to use the media area, media center like we're going to pretty much Monday.
Is that at all the campuses on Monday?
So as of right now, Veterans Hill has all their, their, their library books shelving and, and they're 100%. They, again, it's the lighting that, we have temporary lighting in place. It's the lighting that we're waiting, waiting on, the glass partition doors, different things like that. Probably as, by Monday, all the case work will be done, the, the woodwork, the wood shelvings, the different things that need to go in. So.
But is that just at Veterans or that's at all the campuses?
That's at Veterans, well, no, all the campuses will be able to utilize those spaces starting Monday.
Okay.
So that, that was my and Britt's discussion on Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday. And so he's saying, I'm going to have it ready for you to move the furniture around and utilize it. And, and when we met there on, at a couple of different campuses on Tuesday, they were real close to being ready. Could they have used those spaces? Absolutely. Would, would it been aesthetically pleasing with the, pleasing with the casework missing? No, but the kids could have functioned in those areas with, with the furniture in place and, and the flooring in place and it being safe. We're missing some graphics that need to, needs to go up so it looks incomplete because it doesn't look painted in some areas, but we're just waiting on for some graphics to arrive. And those have a longer lead time. And again, I'm not going to blame it on COVID, but you know, things like that are, have been pushed back because of different.
I just want to make sure we don't have a problem with, you know, with our, I guess, our contractor, right?
Sure.
Are they still working on Saturdays?
Yes, they're, they're working as often as we will allow them. And I'm even allowing them to work when the students are in there, if they want to just, like they, they were in the other day just caulking some glass and different things like that, that I've told them, you're more than welcome to come in when the students are in there, badge, wrap her in, do what you need to do and then get out as long as they're not making, like even today, they were drilling in the courtyard at Nadine. And so we, we talked to Bridget, Bridget's like, it's shaking a teacher's classroom. And we had, we just, and we said, we'll, we'll, we'll come back. And she goes, well, if they can do it relatively quickly, we'll, we'll, we'll endure it. And then, so I talked to the superintendent there and he said, yes, if they can give us another hour, we'll be done. And so they endured the, the shaking of the classroom for an hour so that they could get it done so that we can get the process going.
But you said y'all have been very vocal with them.
We have, yes.
Yeah, there's no question that, that I would describe it as the gas was taken off the pedal here. And so we'll do better. And I know, I know Britt and his team will do better, but we, they have high standards as, as you do as a board and as we do, but you know, mess up, that's not going as quickly and as efficiently as we had hoped it would.
What about all that parking lot mess at Nadine Johnson? Did all that get cleared up?
No, it's still there. You talked about on the front?
Yeah.
Yes, the, the dirt pile, it's there.
Yeah.
All of them have a dirt pile right now, don't they?
I guess they had to, like they put the parking lot down and then had to back up.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't accept the drainage improvements there and they had to tear everything out.
Yeah, that was on them, that was, the, the cost was on them, it was not on us. But our civil engineer wasn't accepting the final product. And so they demoted all that in New York, so on their dime.
That might be something beneficial to communicate out in the public because I've, I've heard some whisperings about how wasteful that may have been and the public has no idea that that was.
We've had some taxpayers approach us and Brandon's had a couple of calls, I fielded some calls and we've reassured them that that didn't cost the taxpayers any money. It was a matter of not accepting a drainage condition that needed to be addressed at that campus. And if you've ever been there, when it's raining, water stands in that front drive. And so our civil knocked it and, and Barrett and their team went forward and did what they needed to do. It was quite a bit of concrete that got pulled out of there, very expensive concrete.
It's funny, Nadine's, when you Google Nadine and, and Google Maps, the front doors show up and there's water in the driveway in the picture because often it stands, or it used to stand in there. So, so the, the, I mean, and.
And that's what I wanted to make sure you guys still had confidence in, in our.
We do, they're, they're, we've, we've got a good team with B O K and with Barrett Williams. It's a good team. Did, did they make some mistakes possibly? Did they, did, did COVID get in the way of some things? Yes.
But not totally.
But yes, that's right. So to provide some humor to this, talking about the, the concrete pour, it's funny that Bridget goes, it's funny, they redid that concrete, but when I pull up and I open my door, there's a puddle right where my foot is supposed to come out and step. And she was like, I wonder if they did that on purpose. We reassured her that they didn't do it on purpose and then they fixed it. Yes, so it was.
Yes, we cannot be stepping into puddles.
Right.
Anything else?
No, that was it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
All right, we'll get the financial report and then if we need to take a break, we can. After that.
I'll make this quick. President, we're, tonight, Dr. will present the monthly financial report for the month of August. We're two months in and it's, it's, it's going well. About the only thing I can say is with our student numbers that Dr. Thomas reported earlier, we are on track. So state aid calculations that I made with the, with the reduced student numbers were, were on track to, to earn the state aid that I anticipated for our budget. So that's good news. If we continue to grow through the year, then, then we'll be in really good shape. But as, as long as we don't see any unforeseen expenditures come down the line. But since it is early, we're, again, about the only bad thing that looks on here is that we're, we spent 5,400, 5.4 million more than we've received. But the fact of the matter is we're just not generating revenue. We don't get our first state aid payment till September. We don't collect current year taxes till October. So the fact is, that's why we want a good fund balance. That's exactly it, is cash flow. And, and so we've got a good fund balance. We, we increased it quite a bit last year. And so even though this looks bad, and it will, it will look this way for the first couple of months from now on because of our change in fiscal year. So one thing I want to point out is even though it looks bad, we have more expenditures than revenues since we are two months in, which is basically 16% of our budget year. Really want to look at what percent amount of budget is being spent. There's three functions that are over 16%, but a lot of that are just, we have a lot of unpriced cost, a lot of software costs that we paid beginning of the year. So we have higher expenditures in, in those areas, but then as the year goes on, it'll flatten out. Are there any questions on the general fund or move on?
And I can tell you that they scrutinize every single expense.
That's good. All right, and again, this is general fund broken down by function and object. And even though we, the expenditures are in line. And so even though, again, we're running, so far this year, the expenditures are in line and we'll catch up with revenue starting next, in September. We'll go on to debt service. Debt service fund, you know, next month will come, will come to you about a financing plan for our next bond issue. And the reason we're doing that is because low interest rates. Well, but that's hitting us here too. We're not earning much interest on our, on our fund balances in our, in debt service. But it's the same story in debt service fund. We had a, a bond payment in last month and so we're not receiving any revenues yet. So as soon as we start collecting on tax collections, then we'll, we'll make up that deficit. Sorry.
So when are they going to look at the interest rates? Yeah, that's, oh, I got you.
I, I don't anticipate interest rates to do anything for the rest of the year. Again, that while we're about to issue some debt, so catch 22. Although we'll save a heck of a lot more money than we would ever earn. So I'll, I'll take that.
Yeah.
I'll take that. I'll, I'll give up some interest earned for a lot less interest paid. And go on to the next one. And again, this is just a summary of tax collections. Again, no current year tax collections until October. The delinquents, one, one, I did catch one error. I forgot to put in last year's number in 1920. So for August of 20, there was 5,200 in Penn and P and I collected not some brothers. And that's just a recap of the tax collection. But it's, it's early in the year, I'm monitoring the student data. That's really the driver, you know, that's really going to determine exactly how much money we're getting. And, and as we went through the budget process, I told you I was a little more conservative than what Timpton had anticipated. And our numbers are a little bit lower than what Timpton had anticipated at this time. But if things continue, we, we expect to continue to gain those students. But, but budget wise, we're, we're, we need to be. That's my report for tonight. See if you have any questions.
I just want to thank, acknowledge Caleb. This, this past couple of weeks, I came in and met with Caleb and Dr. Thomas and Dr. Simone just to kind of go with the check registry, more of a informational session for me, just to kind of figure out. Because I see, I look at it every month and I see things that we're purchasing that, you know, are pretty high dollar, 14, 15,000, you know, not, you know, not board approval, but just to educate me on what those were. And so that was real helpful for me to, to understand that.
Yeah, the first couple of months of the year, you know, last, about the last six weeks of the previous year, we shut down purchasing. We just, so people are kind of chomping at the bit when, when it's time to free up the money again. So there's pretty some, and there, there's a lot of software expenditures that we.
Yeah, and that's, those are the things I, that I wasn't aware of, educated on what they.
A lot of it because of our, the way we're delivering education has, and we had to purchase a lot more software to do that. So, but you know, I, I guess it, luckily, we had a taste of COVID in the last semester of last year, so we anticipated those purchases.
I, I just think the public needs to know that, you know, there is a, a level of transparency that most districts or cities don't see, down to the $5.07 that we spent at Enterprise Car Rental. I mean, it's just, it's just every penny is accounted for.
I have to, you know, and, and again, that we're, my philosophy is when a taxpayer shows up with an open records request, I kind of try to give them more than they even ask for because we really, there's nothing to hide and we, we absolutely want to be transparent because it's not, it's not our money, it's, it's taxpayer money. And so if it was my money, I wouldn't let you see it, but it's not. And so we'll let you see every penny of it.
But just to know, just to let you know how much, how deeply they scrutinize expenses. I'll share this funny, I'm passing by today and Glenn and Caleb were telling me about some credit card receipts that came in for a gas station. And it's like, why, why are we buying gas at a gas station? We have our own gas out at transportation. This shouldn't be happening. So they did some digging, our gas, we actually ran out of gas. And so we had to use the filling station to buy gas, but that was an immediate red flag to them. Why are we paying for gas when we have our own tanks? Yep.
So there was two days where we purchased the gas in town and we all were like, well, you know, let's finance people, we're kind of crazy. What's going on, what's going on, what's going on? We had to dig in.
And I just think, you know, for the public, when you look at the check registry, it's, it's an eye opener. Yes, we're here to educate kids and everything, but we're just like any other business. We've got a water bill to pay and electric bill to pay. I saw it in our forecourt's disposal. So there's a lot of expenses for us to be able to educate our kids and provide for our staff, so.
Oh, I, I've got friends, I've been this, doing this for 20 years and I have 20-year-old friends that still say, so you don't work at Summers, right? No, we just shut it down. We don't pay bills or, or issue checks to anybody. We don't run payroll, we, we just go home, kick our feet up.
Got your side.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Giger.
Does anybody need to take a break, want to take a break? We don't have much left.
Okay, we power through.
Okay. Okay, so next up is the consent agenda.
I would like to pull item nine. Oh, man, I have no.
I would.
Nine E.
Same.
Okay.
So review the consent agenda, we'll pull item 9E and discuss that when you're ready. Morgan, do we have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended by pulling nine, item 9E.
Second.
Who, a second? Okay.
Motion made by Ms. Hubbard and second by Mr. Boutwell, all in favor? Motion passes. And so item 9E is the consideration and approval of the classroom size waiver application. I'll just start, I don't know what Morgan has, but this will be no surprise because I say this every time this comes up. I'm just not a fan and I, I totally get it wide ass to happen, but I do have a couple of questions, but hold it, so.
Oh, sure, I can start. So I read the consideration and I understand the rationale and I understand needing to balance classes, especially with the, the virtual numbers. I do, my wondering is, given the concerns about social distancing and the space within the classrooms and, and all of that, I, I would be amenable to perhaps favoring the virtual numbers, but do we truly feel like waiving the in-person class sizes is really a good idea?
We can't get teachers out, right?
Well, the majority of these are, are virtual, except you've got Hutto Elementary in person and then we've got Howard Norman Kindergarten at 23.
So is it just two classes that we're talking about in person?
So some of the one.
Early.
So some of the one, if I remember, right, let me double check, except for Howard Norman kindergarten, I'll put that aside for a second, because that's going to be a little separate situation. Every single one of the ones in person have a vacant position attached to it.
There's a note about.
If that position was hired, we wouldn't even be filing a waiver for them, because the numbers would spread out. Now, your choice in that situation, because you have a choice and because it's your choice not to file the waiver, is I can immediately dissolve a virtual section at that grade level and combine those virtual sections. And I've got the numbers, I can tell you what that will do to that. What we do is you take that virtual teacher, I'm assuming I've got, got a virtual teacher, I could do that too, move that virtual teacher in person, spread the kids out. The, the negative consequence of that is you could, it's possible we create a class of 50 kids on the virtual side. I don't know, I just made that number up. The reason I chose to put Howard Norman to the side, that was a slightly different reason. Howard Norman's situation was, and I was talking to Ms. Abrams, is there's a group of kids that have been moved because of just, at one point, there was a lot of virtual kids and a few in-person kids. So we had to create a new virtual section. And now the only way to fix it, not the only way, but one way to fix it would, I'd have to dissolve the class, move it to virtual kids a second time, or is it a third time? I'm losing track.
You said the third.
Third time. And create an in-person class. So with the Howard Norman, you have three options. One, we could dissolve the virtual class, I'll move the kids again, and then we'll have in-person, not a problem anymore. The second option is what we recommended, which is to try to push in help. I can guarantee that's a, that, well, it's not a teacher, it's a substitute. And when she's available on campus, she's going over there and trying to lessen the numbers. Obviously, there's the times when there's going to be 23 kids, which is why we're filing the waiver. The third option is to allocate a position, but then we're back in that boat, is whenever that position gets filled, is when those numbers get, get separated out. Those are the options. And in these cases, these are just my recommendations to you, and I'm more open to, to whatever you're thinking.
If you dissolve a virtual class, is that possible that that teacher who's doing the virtual class is one who's asked for that assignment because they have health issues or, or special circumstances? What would that do?
I, the reason I hesitate is, so I'm not privy to all those, those persons. So I just look at that and then we call HR and say, I have two first grade virtual at Huddle Elementary School. I'm planning on dissolving one and they say yea or nay, or, so I don't know the legalities.
So there is a check though, to make sure that we're not.
Forcing. Yeah, but I'm a little out of my realm, so I don't want to say wrong. I don't know if that's, that's, that's something that HR says no or not. But again, that's kind of, I don't know, Lisa's out there, that's, it's kind of a need to know basis, and so I don't always know. I do know a couple of them, but I don't necessarily know which ones. But I would assume if they have qualified for ADA already, then that would be a no. There's still an opportunity to stay virtual somewhere in the district. So.
So you're saying, except for the Howard Norman, the other ones have a teacher spot, a vacant spot?
Coming.
Correct, right?
Yeah, if you scroll down there, it'll show you which ones are waiting for the teacher.
So how long can you run with 23 and not have to file a waiver? I mean, as soon as you bump over that mark, do you need to file a waiver? Or is it, can you run for?
So is, I don't remember what these exact day, but really, it basically ebbs and flows by your school board meetings, because you can't file the waiver unless the school board votes to file the waiver. So once we know that the class is over, then the clock starts ticking. If I didn't file a waiver today, we wouldn't make the clock, because by the time we get to the next board meeting, that, I think it's 30 days, we'll have already.
Within 30 days.
So it's 30-day window. I got you.
So, so basically, as they roll in, I come back to you and say, here it is.
So at what point do you make a decision, like the Howard Norman class with 23? What if there's 25 next week? Like, at what point do you say?
We usually pull the trigger on the 24th. Once that 24th child comes in, then you've got to split the class.
The other part of that, there's a flip side in this COVID era that I, that I look at too, is how many kids are moving out of the virtual section? So if one of those classes become this tiny, 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 even if I've only moved, moved those kids twice, I can't keep that class that way, because it doesn't make sense, not for you fiscally, nor does it make sense for the in-person teacher. So.
So the elementary schools haven't made the transition yet if they chose to, right? Is that in a couple of weeks?
October 13th. Did try to look ahead as of last Friday, I guess is when, or Thursday, when I was talking to the principals, as to what they saw coming in the future. And so there's even one case, Curly's got, I believe, one class that has a virtual class that has 38 kids, but Kyle told me almost all of, and I shouldn't say almost all, a large number of those kids are about to move to in-person. So there wasn't really a reason to address that, but you'll, you'll see that there too.
So are they prepared for that? Like that teacher will go to in-person?
Last we checked on Howard Norman, and it could change up until tomorrow, of course. There was only a net change of one student and I can't remember which way it was going. Now tomorrow, if 10 kids in Howard Norman say they're all going in-person, then we won't bother filing the waiver, we'll just move the teacher. And that would be true also if we have an influx of kids, I'm going to do something. I don't know what I'm going to do, but I'm going to do something if we have, because I should say, Howard Norman is missing, missing maybe not the right word, they're down kindergarten kids a lot. I, I'm sure they're out there and they can enroll tomorrow if they want to. And in that case, we're going to have to move some things around to address that. And like she said, there's certainly a cutoff point at 24 that we don't even talk about it, we do something. And that may be, unfortunately, we have to move those kindergarten kids again, but we were going to try to avoid that if we could.
Anticipate how long it would take to fill those vacant positions?
They've been, last I talked to the principals, they said they, they've been fishing and they haven't gotten anything. Now, I say that and I didn't think Mr. Christian was going to fill that math position tonight and he, somebody walked in the door and got lucky. Now, we did talk to Dr. Omequus this morning, I'm going to Plan B and Plan C. Plan B is, okay, what, what about filling it? We kind of juggle now, push support in, whether that's a sub, that's an aide, somebody to help pull kids out as much as possible. And you hire with the graduates here in December. So that's another plan. Another suggestion Dr. Thomas gave that we were talking about is, well, if we don't try to hire a teacher, we just hire somebody who's a really good person as a teacher aide to help alleviate the numbers. We'd still have to file a waiver in that situation, because remember, the waiver is based on, I've got this roster, it's an instructional thing. It's, it has nothing to do with COVID, it has to do with, I've got 22 kids I'm responsible for. So we'd still file a waiver, but we would have an extra person. Obviously, that would preclude us from hiring a teacher unless we decided to take on the added cost of that person in the future. So the reason we've.
Lisa asked me to unmute her, I think she wanted to say something.
No, I just wanted to let you all know that I'm available to answer any questions. I think there was an ADA question, so I was trying to chime in if you needed responses from our end.
I was struggling, Lisa, just because the question was, if I go to you and say, when, when the principals go and they're moving someone from virtual, or actually in some cases to, from in-person to virtual, are you all checking who gets that position based on ADA or who can't be moved in-person?
Yeah, yes, we are. We're, we're making those reviews as you let us know that the change needs to happen.
So what's classroom size? At what point are we infringing on our social distancing deal to where they have to wear masks to?
Most, as I walked to classrooms last week, most of the kids kept their masks on. I remember asking Linda Pacheco about the masks, she says, a lot of the kids just prefer to keep it on, because if they stand up or move, they forget to put it back on, so it's just easier to, to have it on all the time. It depends, it depends on the classroom. Some, in some classrooms, they're able to spread out, others, just because of how their classrooms are configured, that you don't have six feet between the, the kids. But they have found a way to, to make it work. They take mask breaks during the day. They go outside, they go to different settings. When, when kids get pulled out in this fear of kids in the room, they also take their masks off. But most of the time, people are keeping their masks on.
So what's the issue with getting a long-term sub? Are they just not out there?
No.
I was on today with the HR co-op or the HR connect is what we call it, and all the districts are having the same problem.
Okay.
Learned that Round Rock has, they have increased their sub rate by 50% in hopes of trying to build people in. So that's going to make it more difficult for us. And so.
You may have someone to hire over here in a couple of months.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, we are, we are struggling with the subs. I mean, even in our department, we make cold calls to people who, who haven't signed up for this year and, and many of them are saying that they're just not going to sub this first semester. But we're not alone. This is, this is the consensus from all the other districts that I heard today at 4:00 meeting.
Is the waiver just as long as we, we are over, or just awaiting, we go back and review or discussion?
Interestingly enough, all the state does is if I file a waiver, if you say yes to whatever candidate, I type it into a system tomorrow, I hit a button, and then they send an email back to Dr. Thomas saying TA has accepted your waiver. That's the usual process and no, there have been times actually in the past where I filed the waiver and then the next day, you know, I remember one where we hired a person, numbers went right back down and, but there's no pulling it back off TA.
Or TA coming back and just saying, hey, are you still having this problem or?
I've never heard of that.
I mean, I was just curious.
It could. I should, I could tell you that in talking to the deputies, everybody has come and landed in the same place. There's no way you can hire enough teachers, have 22 to one with the same problem with the virtual person moving kids back and forth. So most people are doing what we're trying to do, which is have a slightly bigger virtual classes than you do in-person and file the waivers. There's going to be a pile of waivers going to TA. The other thing to note, I will probably come, there's a very good chance I'll be back here in October with a different set of, of virtual classes. Because remember, as I dissolve virtual classes to accommodate in-person, I create a new class that has over 22 to one. And so since TA has not changed the rules, I have to come back to you and report that to you. So this is probably going to be an ongoing thing.
Every month?
Maybe every board meeting, potentially.
I have another question. I've been reading about the number of students who have not re-enrolled in like some of our neighboring districts. I know that we don't have those same kinds of numbers missing. Do we have any idea how many kids have not come back or we haven't heard anything on just and how that might impact classroom sizes?
Those leave a report to usually do at the end of the month and Sandy will get us those, those numbers. So yes, we do keep track of everybody who did not return. We've, we, we make sure that they've enrolled somewhere else, because we'll get a match or not a match on those, on those numbers. So we'll get an idea of who, who left us and who didn't enroll in another public school, private or charter.
District-wide, our, our biggest number are the kids who never enrolled in that pre-K kinder. If you're just looking at numbers district-wide, then I don't know what's going on with first grade. It's now, I think, your second largest group in the entire district, which is weird. And they just keep coming. And so I don't know, Henry looked it up and he said it was a drought in 2011, so.
Yeah, trying to figure it out.
Armor's on, Max. We're going to have a ton of COVID babies, y'all just wait and see too.
So our number's 24, right? Not 22?
Well, well, 22 to one is, is the limit. If, if we, we get that 23rd child will come in and file that waiver and try to carry it through. Normally, Dr. Simone will tell you, when that 24th child hits, then you pull the trigger and hire, hire the teacher. But then that creates a lot of disruption, because in order to get that, that teacher set up, you, you end up pulling kids from all of the classes to, to even them out. That's traumatic in itself, but it's just one of those.
22 instead of 24, where you don't have to do that.
I, I don't know.
Well, there is actually, and I, I can tell you, because I remember the conversation, we had a conversation a couple of years ago when I first came here, so I needed to know what it was. The problem is, is I could tell you even one class I pulled off here between Friday and Monday, if anyone was really looking, because a kid left. So he went from 23 to 22 and we're back down again.
That's, yeah, that's why you carry that.
Oh, and what you don't want to do, you know, trying to be, be fiscally responsible, is start hiring a bunch of teachers and then suddenly the kids don't disappear on you. So you try to kind of balance it out and I know I've got that 30-day, and so you're trying to go, well, let's see if this kid's really stay, is the number trending upward? I try to look at a few of those things, it's like, yeah, we need to just go ahead and hire. A good example is Dr. Thomas told me to go ahead and give Huddle Elementary School their fourth grade teacher. They're not actually at the 24, but they keep enrolling kids, fourth grade, I don't know why. That number keeps creeping up every time and I, I told her, I said, you know, by the end of this year, we're going to need one anyways, we might as well do it now.
And of course, these are all in-district kids, these are not transfers or?
Right.
Correct.
Right, these are.
Closed out-of-district transfers to grade levels that are too large. So that's the only reason why, but it is our decision and certainly your decision, if you want us to use a different benchmark to look at that. And so I'll say, you know, you, in this process, you can approve any number of waivers or remove one of them. Either way, I have to have your blessing before I file anything but state.
And I think it's tricky, because you have like this class over here, this teacher with 23 kids and then her counterpart across the district has 13. You know, and, and already people's emotions are high and nobody knows, you know, so it just makes it feel.
I will tell you one other thing you may not be aware of, because of virtual, you have kids, like, I've got kids from Ray who are attending class virtually with a Veterans Hill teacher in order to help balance, we did that to help balance off the numbers. When the numbers got really off and there was just no place to go, we, we balanced them out across the entire district, because virtually you could do it. And that was just another way we're trying to, to balance numbers. Now, in-person kids, of course, you can't do that.
So with all these virtuous, I guess you've kind of met that capacity where you can look at first.
Correct. You know, once I run out of room, I run out of room, or if it does just, for whatever reason, doesn't make sense to do that. And we also try to avoid any kind of special population, sending them to a virtual land in another campus, another campus doesn't really know, causes all kinds of political issues. So yes, a lot of this is balanced. And some of these are a little bit, are filing a waiver, because they've got kids from other campuses in there.
That's what I was saying, you kind of maxed that out, that ability, especially at first grade.
Yeah. So part of our solution that we talked about also is, is hiring some qualified teacher aides, teacher assistants who can come in in those classes that have 23 and throughout the day, pull out small groups. They would work and plan with that, with those home teachers and continue instruction in small groups, just like you pull, you would normally pull out for small groups, but in the room, they would physically be pulled out with that teacher assistant. And there's quite a few people who are working on their teaching certificates, this would be a good opportunity for them. But then again, a lot of folks are, are not coming to work. I mean, they don't want to work this first semester as well. A lot of people choosing to stay home. It's, it is difficult.
Personally, it's hard to be excited about a very good fund balance if, if we're filling out waivers. So I understand, you know, me, I'm, I'm tight as they come. But, you know, it just, it is, you know, it's, I mean.
I think part of that is finding people to fill those jobs.
I totally agree, but if it gets to 24, we got to do something then.
Right.
So.
We're going to be, yeah, we're going to be hiring people anyway.
So if you're wondering, I actually sat down and, and did the math, just for kinder through, through fourth grade, it's about just over a million dollars of staffing to make all sections 22 to one for virtual. That would, that would, just the dollar amount. In-person, obviously, it's a lot cheaper.
And I'm, I think like I've heard other people say, I don't really have as much problem with the virtual as I do the, I mean, because you, you don't have the discipline problems, you don't have the, you know, all of that stuff that.
We can, we can, you know, it's, it's an agenda item from closed session, we can go into closed session and approve some, it's already on the agenda, we can approve some additional teaching units and, and post them, but we already have, we, we already have vacancies posted that we have not been able to fill, but at least they're out there.
Now, we need to go back and approve the teacher aides?
No, what, what? No, what, what, what we would do with a teacher aide, and we could take a teaching position and use that, that allocation, that funding allocation to fill that position until we have, until the next meeting. We get creative in the back until, between board meetings.
Is it a matter of not getting applications at all or not the quality that we're looking for?
I'm sorry, say that again, Lisa?
I was just saying that if it's an additional FTE, whether it's a teacher or an aide, we would need to approve that.
Yes, but what I'm saying, it's, it's already on the agenda. We don't have to wait until another board meeting. We would just have to go back into closed session and approve that.
Okay.
But we do have FTEs already out there that are hired.
Right. Ms. Patterson, how many FTEs out there do we have that have not been filled?
I have to look up the exact number, but I've had conversations with Dr. Onquest and we have really been beating the bushes and calling some of the alternative certification programs, advertising, and we're just, we're just not finding those teachers. I mean, this is just not out there. They're not out there.
To give you a number, I believe in talking, if I remember right, I'm talking to a principal, that principal had eight applicants and unfortunately she knew them. And so didn't, didn't, didn't even call the interview. Some had left our district and some, they knew people, they knew people. And they said it just wasn't even.
Don't worry about the talent pool.
On her staff to get it down, talk to them. So that was a week ago.
Yep. We have 13 teacher vacancies. I found the vacancy report, Lisa. We have 13 teaching vacancies right now, district-wide. Oddwood Creek has one, Hutter Elementary has three, Howard Norman one, Curly has two, Nadine has two, Ray has one, Veterans has one, Hutter High School has two.
So is it a matter of not getting any applicants at all or not getting quality applicants?
Quality applicants.
Okay.
And very low, low numbers of applicants as well.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion?
I just would like to say if, if we, if we decide to do this, and we go with teacher's aides, that we try to really communicate to the parents because.
No, we have to. Yeah.
I mean, it just, but as far as not communicating the waiver, but communicating that we are getting a waiver and we're going to provide some additional support services for that class so that they're not just thinking of just getting a waiver and just going with behind numbers.
Right.
Generally speaking, when we work with the principals, we always try to put in there, so we're required to send a letter whenever we do a waiver to the class. Try to put in there whatever we are doing.
Right, the plan.
As well. So it's not just a, part of it is a form letter, part of it, I ask the principal to fill out because each principal has their own kind of plan worked out with their teachers as to what they're going to do.
Yeah, but I'm just talking about the parents, that the parents.
This, yeah, this is to the, let the parents, yeah, we're not just filing a waiver. We got a plan and this is why we're filing the waiver as opposed to, it's because we don't want to spend, we're filing the waiver because this is interest and this is why.
Yep. And the, I mean, even the high school, Dr. Sermani and I talked about the high school, they've got two teaching vacancies right now, but they've already, they've already met their enrollment projection and they're going to get pretty close. So as the year progresses, they'll prob, by semester, they'll probably need some additional teachers as well.
And I guess I would like to maybe suggest in the Friday report, not every week, but maybe in two weeks, just kind of an update on where we're at.
Do you want the vacancy report?
Well, I know, I'm just talking about, you know, the waivers or just an update on this status if we approve it tonight. It's kind of. Where we stand as far, how many classes are over the. Yeah, because I hate to wait till the next board meeting to hear.
Well, we can take this, the same table that Dr. Sermani created and we can just update that.
I don't think it's every week, but in a couple of weeks or something, just kind of provide an update in the Friday report.
Linda, will you make a note of that in the calendar, please, every other week? Class size report. You just call it the class size report and then we'll send it over to Dr. Sermani and Lynn.
The team's got a built-out report for me now so that.
Okay.
Hit the button. And then I just need to make sure I put the notations on the side so you know which ones have waivers, which ones don't.
So with the virtual and the in-class learning, I hate to beat the dead horse here, but how many, how many classes like kindergarten do we have in a, I mean, is it like two? So we're looking at, you know, there's 23 here, the next kid that comes in will be 23 in the other class, and then one more kid and it goes to 24. And then is that, I mean, how many, I guess, what's the split virtual to in-person learning? I mean, are we looking at a bunch of them or are we just looking at a couple?
Well, you know, obviously it varies for, for, if you want to talk about Howard Norman, I actually have, have all of them.
That sounds good.
They actually have four teachers. Where are they? They have four teachers at 75 total students.
Four teachers in person?
No.
Teachers total, 75 students. They have 20, 45 students in person, 30 students virtual, and they're at two and two.
So you're 15, 15, and then you're.
All right. And we can dissolve one virtual, move them over, solve it, and we have one of 30, which we, which is doable. But the issue with Howard Norman is, is we were worried about the kids having to move that group of kids.
For the third time.
Originally had a lot less in-person, a lot of virtual. And so we actually moved teacher to, now we would be moving again. So that was, that was my concern. I mean.
It's a nightmare. I, I don't envy your job here because it's, you know, and when, especially when they can change every six weeks and then you're trying to.
Yeah.
And I really, I, it's a strong decision. If you really feel strongly that we should go ahead and move the virtual to in-person, we'll do it tomorrow. But we'll do the process. It takes a little longer than just doing it tomorrow.
The thing about it is, it's not just that one class we're talking about. I mean, right?
No, because, yeah.
District one.
This whole list that you provided is all needing waivers. Is that right?
Correct. Yep.
I think we all kind of have the same opinion that the virtual, and I could be wrong about this, but is probably easier to manage with the, you know, with a higher number of kids.
You could make that motion.
So you think that 39 virtual kids in a third grade class is a big?
No, I'm not saying 39, but I'm saying a bigger number.
Because this, this particular one says 39 students in a third grade class.
That's one that's unresolvable without getting a person. All we can do is push and support because if all I could do is dissolve an in-person, which would put them all over 22 to one to relieve the virtual class, and there's no home for them.
Isn't that the one waiting for a teacher though?
Yeah.
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion. Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion that we authorize the superintendent or the IST to submit the waivers to the TA as originally requested on the agenda.
Can I keep the original wording for that particular one? Okay. So motion made.
Will you read it, Morgan?
Motion made for the consideration and approval of the classroom size waiver application.
Made by Mr. Petias. Or a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Gooding. All in favor? And any opposed? Motion passes. Five to one. Okay. Um, next up, I believe Ms. Multer will be giving this presentation.
Pam, she'll be online. Virtually, we'll bring the presentation up. Jessica and her team are prepared to give you a final analysis and look see at the transportation slash data center project to include the final scope. We've run this thing through the wringer pretty heavily and have determined that we are at a, at a place in, in the, in the budget estimation process where we think we can go to the streets. So I'd like for her to share with you and answer any questions that you may have. And then the motion is to approve what she presents, but also authorize your contractor to go out on the streets. And if we do take that out in the next week's, bring you the GMP feedback for consideration and approval next month. Brandon, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
That was it.
Jessica, are you on? So hold on, Jessica, let us get it pulled up. Jessica, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Welcome this evening. We're trying to pull the presentation up. I'm going to try to fiddle with the forwarding if you will cue me when you're ready. But it's, where's it at? It's not there. What did I hit it?
I think it was open.
Was it?
Go to the find.
There it is. It's the one on the left there.
One right here.
Yes.
Okay. Go to the presentation. All right, Jessica, you're on.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, board and Dr. Strata-Thomas. Wanted to quickly go over this tonight. You, you were all updated on this last month, so this should be pretty quick. We spent, I can go one forward. This is the schedule that we showed you last time. And so now we're at September 24th here. We've spent, since our design approval last month, we spent this last month wrapping up any loose ends, the final coordination with our consultants and with our, with our construction manager. And so we wrapped up the drawings today and those will, with your authorization, go out to, to bid with Brad Williams as the estimate risk. We have about three weeks of bidding and then they'll prepare the GMP to bring back to you at your board next month. And then the goal is to, when that is approved in October, to be able to start November 1st with an eight-month construction timeline and then a one-month move-in time to be prepared for August of next year. If you want to go one forward. Just a reminder of the program, I won't go through all of this, but it is just, just shy of 17,100 square foot program. And of course, that's one story for the shop area and two-story for the offices. Go forward one. Sorry. And just a reminder of the site plan, that building on the right there is your existing warehouse and maintenance building. FM 1660 is up there at the top. And the new building will be over to the west of it, kind of near the Ag Barn. And this will also include 25 white fleet parking spaces. And it will be very convenient to a future drive that will be there on the west. And one of the, the big reasons that this was a very good place to locate this building was it is in close proximity to a lot of the utilities. We're able to shorten a lot of the distances of those.
Also save some money with the location on drainage improvements.
Yes, very good point. The first floor plan, so I'll just go through with the colors because it's easier to color code it that way. On the left here, we've got the four, four maintenance space. And so everything in blue is supporting the bus maintenance or the vehicle maintenance. The smaller rooms, of course, are part storage and locker rooms, tool storage, that sort of thing. The orange spaces are your driver's facilities, so places to support the bus drivers and vehicle drivers. And then the orange or peachy color there is the transportation office. And so everything else there is support. The light gray is your circulation. The darker gray is support spaces. You can see the, the area to the right is a two-story space. And so you'll see on the next slide. We have that open to below area, which is just that bus maintenance area is two stories high. We also have an office and a storage platform on that level. And then a lot of, the orange or peachy spaces, again, are the transportation office facilities. And so in that bottom right corner, there is dispatch. And so they'll be able to look over the whole fleet and the parking area. And professional development support rooms across the way. Those are the, that large room across the hallway up there at the north. And then in the green area, as we mentioned earlier, earlier tonight, is the data center. So this area will support all of your, your data center needs for the district.
And I'll add that the room that we're designing for conferencing, professional development will serve not only transportation, but it's also considered a district-wide operation. And something else that we've not highlighted in the past, this will also become your EOC, your emergency operations center, because we will have the ability by generated power to protect the data center. We will also electrify portions of this building so that if something were to happen in our community, this then becomes a, a, a place for you as a board to come together in an emergency along with the superintendent and our leadership team in, in the event of an emergency. That will also help us keep our fuel supply, our buses. It just makes a lot of sense to have it located out there. So that's another advantage for doing those kinds of things.
Yep. All right. And that, that really wraps up my presentation tonight. So we're asking or seeking your approval tonight of the contract documents and authorizations for Brad Williams, the construction manager at risk, to solicit for bits.
A couple of questions.
Yes.
Henry, the parking, the employee parking, will.
So there will be, let me see if I can pull it. There will be some modifications. There we go. Some restructuring and rethinking of how we're going to do the parking.
Okay.
Employees can be.
I just would like, I'm going to have to walk off across the park.
As you know, now our buses are kind of in that location. Something that was mentioned earlier with the gas credit cards, we also know that we're running into a situation where we're, we're capping out the use of our fuel. So Brandon and I are looking at some alternatives through some savings to add another fuel allowance to help us avoid that in the future. We, we're getting close to where it's starting to be a challenge. So a second fuel station is going to be needed. But, but all of that will be reworked, and I'm pointing Jessica to the parking, reworked and restripped to reorganize where we plan buses and where we park the employees.
You know, are there going to be stairs from the second floor?
Stairs and an elevator.
Well, to get down to the, to the bands where the buses, where you work on the buses. I saw a door on the second floor.
Oh, that's for the shop team to get, get up and down.
Okay, that's interesting. And the data center doesn't need any room for staff? It's just going to be all the computers and everything?
There will be a small kiosk area so that the data techs can go in there and work.
Okay.
It's kind of a standalone.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
There is an, I don't know what they call it. There's a safe room or, or something along those lines where they can get in there. They, they're the only ones with access. And they can work outside of the actual data center or go into the data center and do some work. But there won't be any staff that will be assigned out there.
And the construction of it, does that, will that include calls for furniture and?
Yeah, there's some FFNE carried in this budget, but we're also looking for other savings opportunities as we go along. And this will be very open cubicles and things like that.
Okay.
How close is this to the Ag Barn?
It's, it's quite a ways away. Jessica, do you have an estimate of how far away or how close the Ag Barn is? There's a road that's actually going to go around, Henry.
Okay.
Yeah, there will be a road between the Ag Barn in the future and the site plan, or I'm sorry, and this transportation facility. So it will be separated with a drive in the future. There's definitely room for all of that.
And there's an acre that's been donated to Jonah for a water tank. If you remember that exchange, we were able to get some meters in exchange for a donation or conveyance of land. So there's some distance there.
So you know, you know how the buses make that noise when it backs up? You don't think that those, that noise will bother the animals in the Ag?
Only going to raise cattle that, that are not susceptible to that beeping.
I'm not trying to be funny here. Neither is Henry. The goats don't like that.
Not ferocious anymore. They didn't want to state champions or national championships. I'm just saying, I mean, tech got closer.
But if we have a problem with the animals, we, okay, we wouldn't be able to relocate this.
I know. You're saying it's going to be far enough away though.
Well, there's going to be noise out there. I mean, those animals endure the train right now. And, and.
They'll, they'll adapt.
To location of the current.
But it's not that high-pitched beeping noise.
I think that only affects the pigs. Is that right?
Okay.
We'll do some research.
Okay.
We should probably table this then.
We can buy them earplugs.
This is, this is the man who got complaints in another facility because the fireworks at the, at our stadium scared the goats. And the goats didn't mate one year because it got scared with all of the noise that was coming from the stadium. Remember, it mass dropped with that, that farmer that called. So.
Oh, yeah. Damn back behind after graduation. Yes.
So this is why I was asking about the noise since.
I honestly never have even asked Travis that question. I'll certainly address it with him.
So going back to the site plan, Henry, I do have a question that Terrence had, he just, yes, go back there. So will the, will there be enough parking for all of the drivers? Are they still going to have to park in that parking lot and then?
They'll be here.
Then walk all the way across. Then walk all the way across.
Claim this department will relocate to here. Our white fleet will shift and then we may do some balancing acts and then we're going to work on relocating and reorganizing the strapping for the buses.
Okay.
And we know that at some point down the road, this will not be enough parking for the group that we're anticipating. But as I've said to y'all in the past, David Eckert and I are also looking at the possibility of a satellite operation when we finish the stadium project where we may locate some of our buses who support the western runs or the south, southern runs, like we have done in other districts at the stadium on the visitor's side. That's an empty parking lot during the day. And if I move ten or fifteen buses, we put a small job check there with a, with a preventative maintenance routine, it would be there. One, it would cut down on what we call deadhead miles and it would better serve the, the buses to the south.
Okay.
I think David and I are looking more at, rather than expanding here, at satellite operations as we grow.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to approve the contract documents for the transportation data center project and authorize the district's construction manager to advertise and solicit bids.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hubbard and second by Mr. Padilla, all in favor? And motion passes.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Can we go back?
And so it is ten oh nine and we are going to return to closed session. At five five one dot zero seven four.
The personnel.
Yeah, personnel.
It'll be quick, it'll be quick. Okay, so we. Pardon me? We, we have adjourned.
Are you ready?
Yes, I think it's back on now.
Hey, we are returning from closed session at ten twenty-one and is there action out of closed session?
Yep, there is, one second. Dr. Thomas? I seem to remember that there is, thank you, yes.
I've been too.
Make a motion to approve personnel request to superintendent's personnel request of five additional teaching FTEs and two paraprofessional.
Motion made by Ms. Hubbard. And by Mr. Owens. All in favor? Motion passes. And then board calendar. Don't forget that we have the quarterly review on October eighth. So be sure to look over the document that was provided to us and look in that shared folder.
This out.
You can write notes on it.
Yes. Any, anything else on the calendar?
Back to my show, your adjourn.
Made by Mr. Valwell, is there a second?
Okay.
By Mr. Padilla, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.